...grace and the opportunity to be here another day. Thank you for another fresh start. Help us to trust in your plan and let go any fears and regrets that may hold us back. Lord, let us see the new beginning if you're placing in front of the Sigras, the wisdom to embrace them. Thank you for your mercies that are reeling every morning. Now let us go around, go out in confidence and embrace this new start.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Florida, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell called Mr. George.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Mr. Hesse? Here. Mr. Searle? Here. Mr. Morris?
I am here. Thank you, sir. People of the agenda, you have any changes to the agenda, sir?
No changes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Do you approve the agenda?
Second motion.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Mr. Searle?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes, once again, thank you and welcome. And I want to make an announcement before we get into all of the items on this agenda. We have a quick fact calendar of items today. So at 10 o'clock, regardless of where we are, whether we are doing presentations, we'll interrupt that section of the meeting to go into a public hearing that is going to address one item. And so the opportunity for us going into that is that if we have any presentations that are still pending, we'll bring them back right after we go through the public hearing. And usually, we don't know exactly how long the public hearing is going to be, but definitely I want to put that clarification right up front. So thank you, commissioners. We're going to go to section number two. Consideration of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of April 1st, 2025. We have a copy of those, commissioners. I will entertain any comments, any discussion at this time.
We approve the regular meeting minutes of April 1st, 2025.
Okay. Commissioner Searle?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes, thank you. We will go to section three, reading our correspondence. Commissioner, can you give reports? Commissioner Lucero, would you like to go first?
Sure. On Friday, this past Friday, we met with, down at City Hall, with the US Army Subcolor Work Group, kind of went over their, what's going on. And he brought us up to date on the KI that's working pipeline, which is, we are anticipating trying to get that relocated. It will still remain on the Pino Canon property, but trying to relocate that. They were working on some environmental studies. They don't have the appropriate money at this point, because it's going to run about $44 million to move that pipeline. So, and also, they brought us up to date on major trade events that will be taking place in S O B, I think, May 1st. I'm here, so you see a lot of traffic. Also, they're going through some lab rehabilitation and maintenance projects out on the base, because they do care about their training, they bring it back to where it was. And then the formless of the community events that they are taking, they'll be involved in a lot of the parades that are scheduled. Basically, trying to be a good neighbor and being involved in the community. And that's where that was at. Also, that same day, we had the Founder's Day celebration, 100 years of existence for the TSJC College, and also a dedicated, newly renovated Bluefall Library. I haven't been in the library in probably 30 years. If you ever, if you get a chance to go up there and take a look at that, it's sure worth it. It's a big change. So with that, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hesse?
I attended the County Help Pool Meeting. I was chair of that County Help Pool. There's 47 member organizations involved in the pool. The pool helps spread the risk out. The purpose of the meeting was to review our audit. The CPHP and the Audit Service Communication by KFI Audit and Advisory, they followed the doubt and the gas being. There were, it was a clean audit, no disagreements, no significant findings, and a clean modified opinion. Two of the things they identified were the stockless renewal was at 13% and healthcare costs rose 8.1% in 2024. We lost four county entities that were participating in the county of one, maybe two. Then on the 7th of April, I attended the Co-op Steering Committee Meeting. This meeting was to go over the annual summit that's coming up soon, I believe, the 27th through the 29th of this month. And they asked me to be a panel speaker to represent Ag in the Colorado Outdoor Partnership. And I accepted to speak on behalf of private property and Ag and local governments. Then on the 10th and the 11th, CCI legislated Steering Committee met. CCI took positions on just a handful of bills that would directly affect counties and general. These were new bills. We also had updates on a plethora of old bills that we've taken positions on and where they were in the process. Los Angeles County and Mr. Ergon were praising him for their heavy lift to ensure that all of our departments and human services would receive at least partial funding and full funding for some. During these budget cuts that are going on with a lot of our state agencies, that was really a heavy lift, and Mr. Ergon did a fantastic job arguing on our behalf. A few bills I'd like to highlight are HB 251309 and 1312. Both of these attack parental rights. If your child identifies as a boy and is a girl or vice versa, even if they identify as a cat, the parent won't be allowed to use any other name or other than their, they can use any other name if they wanted other than their given name. And the parent, if, for instance, he, the parent decides that that kid can't do that, that they have to, my birth name was Tony, they're going to be called Tony, they can remove that child because they consider it abuse. And also, the other bill was on gender-affirming cares and procedures like breast implants are worse. A child would have the ability to tell them that they would like to start those procedures. This is a huge attack on parental rights, and I'm just appalled that it passed on a party line vote, and I'm just appalled that it got through. One more bill, CCI took a position to oppose on was Hospital 251323. This expanded the statewide planning, coordination, and management of outdoor recreation, conservation trail systems, and water river access. This bill had little to no stakeholder input, was dropped on Wednesday and was heard on the following Tuesday. And without stakeholder input, it wasn't going to get through the process. This bill, the reason, the other reasons that CCI opposed were, CCI felt that the procedures could violate private property rights, both by access to rivers or to state land. And access across private property would have to be, probably eminent domain would have to be used for that to happen if private property owner didn't want to participate. This scenario came up with another bill, it was called River Act Bill, back in like 2012, I believe. And it was heavily proposed, been defeated at that time. This bill was postponed indefinitely yesterday. So good work on CCI's behalf.
That's my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Well, good morning, everyone, again, and thank you for your patience as we go through this agenda today. I want to remind all of you that if you're interested in seeing what Colorado Counties Incorporated gives a watch on, we have a list of this legislation on the San Luis County website. Go and look at it and see the position of what counties have taken. One of the bills that counties actually debated over and over and over was Senate Bill 25-003. That was a semi-automatic rapid fund, I mean rapid fire weapons. And so we, Colorado Counties Incorporated, sent a 68%, 68% of the 64 counties order against this piece of legislation. So we went forward, and the San Luis County stood very strong right at the forefront of this whole thing in opposition of this particular legislation, because we feel that is an attack on the Second Amendment. And any amendment that is constitutionally granted through God-given rights in establishing the United States Constitution is going to be defended. So that is one of the, one of the comments that I really want to put out there, simply because this board, Commissioner Hesse and I were at a meeting, as well as in Denver, where Commissioner Lucero was locally attending the meeting, and we voiced the opinion as to why, why we needed to push back on Senate Bill 3. Nonetheless, it went forward, it passed both chambers. It passed both chambers when they have the majority, and then both. So it was signed by the governor last week. So from that perspective, we'll see what happens. But I want you to know that your county is an advocate for the Second Amendment rights. The, one of the reminders once again, as of today, we have 620 bills that have been introduced. 331 from the House of Representatives and 289 from the Senate. The governor will continue to cite these bills as they come forward. And as Commissioner Tony has mentioned, these bills are, they pretty much cover the entire gamut of what we're going through. And so in communications with both the House District 47 Representative and Senate District 35 Senator, they send a list of the good back and the ugly bills. And so that's how we are able to monitor what's happening. And if you have an opportunity to testify on any piece of legislation, I encourage all of you to do so. Because at the end of the day, it's the constituents, it's the voters. We do a fair portion of the heavy lift right up front, but it's the constituents when it comes to this whole, this whole perspective. One of the, one of the important things is that voices, the more voices we have, obviously, the stronger the message is going to be. Last week, I had an opportunity to attend the State Land Board. They had their statewide meeting here in Trenton. And what an interesting opportunity to learn of what the State Land Board is doing. They have, of the $2 billion that they have generated, they have helped build 520 schools to Colorado through the best program. And so a lot of the revenue that they have is from the leases of property and lands that they have on their inventory. But 520 schools, we know that several of the local schools have received best dollar grants, and those are making a huge impact on the local student. The, of course, the CCI meetings, the legislative meetings that went on both Thursday and Friday. The Colorado Buffer Allocation Formula, of which I'm part of the State Board, keeps on working basically to come up with a funding formula for the years to come. And one of the, one of the things that we're attempting to do with the formula is do harm, whole harmless small counties. Because a lot of the services have to be provided either by adjudicated court and/or by simply entitlement through the program's existence. So we, there was a recommendation, but unfortunately, on Friday, we also hosted a representative, United States Representative Bird's team, as well as Senator Hicken-Louper's team, so we were in a meeting with them. But that meeting was actually very good with the two congressional representatives. And so one of the things that we sent, we are going to be sending to the representative as well as the senator, is going to be a list of projects that hopefully they can help us find. One of the, one of the programs that we have through Colorado is off-road bridges. We have small airports that are basically underserved. So we're going to put a list of projects and hopefully go out. If we send three or four, maybe we can get a funding for one. But there's an opportunity to meet with these individuals. So we had a very robust discussion. And in it, of course, you know, back and forth, what are the needs of the San Luis County? And when it comes to transportation, a few years back, Senate Bill 260, I believe it's 22-260, actually imposed a fee on a lot of the services, including gasoline, to collect several billions of dollars in Colorado that was, are supposed to be injected back on roads. And of course, CDOT is working with counties to create through the regions, transportation groups, what are the projects that are in most need? So we need, once and for all, the fact that we leave the meeting is happening next week here in Trenton with CDOT to outline what is the five-year plan, what is the 10-year plan for projects to maintain the roads. We have kind of the entrance to Colorado, I-25, we have that. And if you notice, I-25 between here and probably Los Angeles needs a little bit of a care and love. So there are, we're bringing those projects. Another project that we're working with in CDOT is Highway 12. Between here and about Monument Lake, there are just a tremendous amount of need, whether it is repaving, resealing, and so on. But that is what we met with the delegation to remind them that if the state does not have the funds, what can the federal government, in partnership with the San Luis County and others, do for the region? The last item I want to bring to you all is the Southeast Colorado Region 19, the opioid settlement funds. We had a very robust conversation yesterday, one of the meetings. One of the topics of the meeting was, what would a community, what would the reaction of a community be if we have needle exchange programs? So that is, I'm not a scientist, I'm not a medical doctor, but certainly, there's going to be a lot of research if indeed some of the dollars that are being allocated through the opioid region 19 would be implemented for needle exchange programs. What would that do? We need a lot of support, so the medical community needs to basically come out and say, well, this is a good idea, that's a bad idea, and/or even our public health. So at this point in time, that topic of conversation will continue to be pushed forward until we have enough data to make a very, very well-informed decision. You know, because if we were to get into this thing and we would now have vending machines to dispose of these needles. You know, I just don't believe that that is a process by which we get any positivity. But that's my opinion, that doesn't reflect anybody else's opinion but mine. Because what if my grandson decides to go to the vending machine? You know, how do you, how do you manage and monitor those kinds of things? But nonetheless, I want to welcome your involvement with the legislature. There's about a month left in the, in the general session. If you get an opportunity and there is some legislation that you feel that you need to testify on, do so. Go out, take a look at the General Assembly, and you can see and listen what's happening, either on the House or the Senate floor. Very, very important information for the all Colorados to get involved in that. So thank you, my fellow commissioners. That's going to be my report. And now we're going to go on to elected officials' updates. I see one in the audience, the San Luis County Assessor, Mr. Maro. Do you have any updates for us?
You know, if I'm here, I always have an update. Good morning, board. We are wrapping up our reevaluation across the state. We will be sending out notices of evaluation May 1st. So those will be going out to all taxpayers to notify them of what their taxable value will be for 2025 and 2026. Just a reminder, the month of May, May 1st to June 9th is your legal protest period to come and speak with an assessor or my staff if you don't feel the value of your property is correct. We are requesting either you bring us an appraisal as of June 30th of 2024, because that is our state deadline for sales, or three comparables or a market analysis. But we cannot look at anything past June 30th of 2024. We're not anticipating a whole lot of protests, but you never know. Right now, we're seeing a lot of questions because tax bills are coming due, people are paying their taxes. You cannot protest your tax value, you can protest your actual value of your property. Taxes are determined by mill levies, which go to those entities. I am in control of your market value, and Colorado is a market state. And we are still seeing the market maintain a very high value when it comes to sales of homes and vacant land. So just that for an update. We are currently wrapping up our pictometry flight, our spring flight. They've had, through the weather, they've had it all scheduled out. And then we had some snow, we had some rain, we had some plane issues. So they're hoping to get that wrapped up in the next two weeks if the weather stays clear. I know we have a chance of snow this weekend. So right now, we're flying I-25 all the way to the eastern edge of our county, past Quim. So we will have three-inch imagery there, which will be very, very helpful to my office and to the county and Ronan Bridge and heaven forbid, hopefully, we don't have fires this year. But we have used that to help in fire instances. So as soon as they get that done, I will be letting the board and everybody know when that is, that imagery is delivered to my office. So we're excited to get that. I received an email from the state last week. I'm sure everybody remembers when we went into special session as a legislature last year in July, I believe, our extraordinary special session, when they were going to save the taxpayers' tax dollars. And we put in all these actual value adjustments. We lowered assessment rates on the guarantee that those entities that would be affected would be backfilled. Well, the backfill numbers just came across my desk. So I will forward this on to Ms. Christie. We had a total set aside after assessors, treasurers, the entities, and the people that came to the table to talk about this told legislatures that they were not putting enough aside to backfill these small entities. They had $10,311,233 set aside in the fund. Forty-two counties had qualifying local governments needing backfill for a total of $46,127,449. So we did fancy math again, because that's what our legislature likes to do, is do the fancy math. So every entity is going to get a proportional reduction percentage of 22.35% of what their original reimbursement would be. So I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 districts in our county that will qualify for the reimbursement. Los Angeles County's at the top. Our total reimbursement would have been $292,981. We will get $65,492. Our ambulance districts, our fire districts, our conservation districts, I have one conservation district, we will send them a check for $7. So unfortunately, I'm really hoping that the legislature will start to listen to those of us that do this on a day-to-day basis, those of us that have the day-to-day knowledge. We have 20-plus years of knowledge in this industry. When we do try to come up with a solution legislatively, I hope that they will start to listen to the people that have the education, the knowledge, the experience, and will take us seriously when we tell them you are not appropriating enough to help backfill some of these small, smaller entities. So, any questions?
Yes, have you communicated with all those districts?
Not yet. I will be sending out emails today.
There we go. So $30,000,000 short, that's really what it comes down to. The other, my other question is, there was a piece of legislation that was approved that would give taxpayers the opportunity to pay their taxes perhaps in four installments. When is that going to be enacted, do you know?
I thought the one that was going through the treasurers, I thought that was table. I don't know if it moved forward. But I do know everybody should have received, probably two months ago, a letter from, or flyer from the governor's office to come see your treasurer about deferred payments. But that is all through the state treasurer and our local treasurer. But yes, the forepayment one, my understanding is that was a kill bill.
School districts are remaining hold?
School districts are a totally different, new funny math calculation. So we don't know what's going to happen with them. What we, what I, my office is implementing now is school districts. This is the first time ever in Colorado, we are bifurcating assessment rates. So when you get your tax bill next year, you will be paying more into school districts because the state is pushing more local funding to school districts than state backfill funding. Because they hid away with the SB, the stabilization backfill factor, two years ago, I believe. So we are not really sure what schools are going to look like, considering the state is in a deficit. Nobody has seen those numbers yet, but locally, taxpayers will be funding their school districts more. If you received your tax bill this year in January, you probably already saw your taxes increased somewhat because those schools were able to increase, which they have been for the last almost four years, and I think they get up to 27 mills, increase their mill levy by one per year. And those school districts that had bond levies increased their bond levies to cover their bond payment because they saw their valuations go down because of all the special session, new laws, and reductions in value that took place. So essentially, it was, we were robbing Peter to pay Paul, and now everybody's burger.
So as of now, through the country, the Ucap will deck out 100%?
That will be a full coverage of our county for our second flight for within the last six years.
Very good. And then she must plug a telemetry pilot that will sell fuel.
I think they're, I think they're flying out of the cloud load.
We sell fuel first.
I will tell them. I will remind them of that, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then I'll take a moment just to, we were at a meeting with Fort Carson. Mr. George Camp raises his hand, and he says, I remind Fort Carson pilots, we have fuel at the San Luis County Airport. Of course, the general and the Garrison Commander. We are fueling there, sir, but we have fuel at the airport, so thank you for that. Let me call in the other elected official. Do we have anyone from the Urban Recorders Office? Treasurer? Sheriff? Thank you, sir. District Attorney? Order. Here we are. We're going to go to the next item. It is going to be presentations, and I want to welcome our Purgatory Water Partnership, Julie Kanutsu with the River Update. Good morning, Julie. How are you?
Morning. How are you?
And thank you for sending those slides. Got an opportunity to look at, so...
Excuse me.
I'm wanting to...
Oh, if you can run it, that's great.
Tell me before we go backwards.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's probably better. Okay.
Great.
Good morning, and thank you for having us to give our annual project updates from Purgatory Watership Partnership. So, next slide. So a little refresher of what we do. Multi-water user projects, education, skills, training, and stewardship, trails, land management, fuels mitigation in the upper watershed, wildlife projects, agricultural and other infrastructure projects, river and watershed management planning, river cleanup, water quality, and a lot more. Believe it or not, I slipped down this presentation. Next slide. So first up, an exciting multi-water user project that you all have been hearing about for a few years since we started in 2019. Next slide. So this is the biggest project we're working on in terms of size and funding and logistics. This is the river section from the Commercial Street Bridge to the to the Railroad Bridge that connects the Hilton Garden Inn and the Toyota dealership. Again, it's a multi-phase project kicked off in 2019. This has been a very slow and thoughtful process of phased project development and implementation, which is way too slow for a lot of people. But as you know, as PWP, for any collaborative project, we have to move at the pace that all partners are ready. So it's happening as fast as it can happen. And for example, some project components are currently in pause mode. For example, we're waiting for the new city manager to come on board so we can update our design team with the new city representative so we can then move forward again with design efforts. And we're also working in collaboration with a lot of entities to develop win-win solutions for our unhoused population that will also benefit all of our other community members and our river. This is no easy task, but it's something that we all need to address, obviously, before we start building a lot of other stuff. So next, yeah, perfect. So here's a project overview of the project area, Commercial Street to the Railroad Bridge, a ton of amazing partners. We've worked with City of Trinidad's staff at every step of the way. Ag producers, the Downtown Trinidad Development Group, Trout Unlimited, Parks and Wildlife, US Army Corps of Engineers, Los Angeles County, the Youth Club of Trinidad, and a ton of other partners that have been with us at each step. And many, many engaged community members. Next slide. So project overview, I just watched you through the partners, next slide. And we're serving multiple water user groups. And that's an important piece of how we were able to secure a lot of funding. We're serving ag users, municipal users, ecological wildlife and recreational users. And this project is designed in huge part to help support our downtown economic development, to support local businesses. And a ton of ongoing community outreach. We have another community headgate talk from 12 to 1 on Wednesday, May 7. If folks would like to join us, they'll just meet at the Club 14 parking lot and stroll over to the headgate to chat. Next slide. So funding secured to date, there's more than 40 different partners. These 40 partners gathered $500,000 in local cash and in-kind match. That was then leveraged to secure 10 different grants and awards, resulting in over $5 million of cash secured for project work. So we turned $500,000 into $5 million. So that was pretty exciting. So project work completed to date. The restoration of the Baca Picket Wire Diversion Dam that you have all seen there by Club 14. Installation of a boater and debris bumper in front of the headgate. Installation of the riverbank flood protection wall, that new concrete wall you've seen there. Removal of many non-native trees and removal of a lot of other woody material and understory vegetation to improve water delivery, public safety, aesthetics and a view of the river. So as always, we've been working with the police department and fire. There's some fires down along the river. So all of these things serve multiple purposes. Removal of a huge amount of accumulated sediment in the river corridor. Again, working closely with the city, who's been putting money into this project at every step of the way. And most recently, installation of fish habitat and restoration of the purgatory at Trinidad River Gauge Station. So that is the only river gauge station in the whole downtown Trinidad area that measures flows and can help us keep on top of floodwater if things are flooding. So a really important gauge. So that work is for a fish habitat, also, obviously, for us, for safety and tracking flows. And it's also going to provide important bank stabilization and erosion control for the city's Commercial Street Bridge from ongoing erosion that's been happening upstream. Next steps, final design and construction of a river patio and the ag producer's headgate parking area, ditch lining of the first section of the ag producer's ditch there. Final design and construction of fish and boat passage into the diversion dam. And final design of a larger downtown community river park at the Commercial Street Bridge project area. And as a reminder, we would not have been able to secure this funding if it wasn't multipurpose. So they wouldn't have just given us funding to do fish passage or just boat passage or diversion dam restoration. We had to be doing all of it in order to get this funding.
And you required that funding?
Yes, PWP together with these 40 partners and all of this amazing cash and in-kind match that they served up. Yes, but PWP wrote all the grants. And so where we are, the final design of fish and boat passage plus the design of the larger project area. Obviously, we need to design all the pieces together. We can't just design efficient boat passage without also designing boater put-ins and takeouts and hangout spaces so that they all fit together perfectly. Since 2019, we've been working with the community to gather a ton of information. Last year, the Trinidad Water Festival, kids designed their dream downtown river park. Lots of really cool ideas, which I don't have time to share with you right now. A lot of informal chats, hearing stories from so many of our community members about how they used to use the river, childhood memories and what they would like to see happen down there. Amenities, so many, but again, some of them accessible, fishing and river access points, trails, bathrooms, hangout spaces, education, new water education station, cultural heritage, signage and interwoven design components, honoring local heritage, and a ton more. So project work next steps, again, final design and construction of the fish and boat passage is already funded. Final design of the larger downtown community river park project is already funded. Construction of the larger downtown river park project area. That's all those amenities that we just listed. Once the design is complete, we'll then work with all partners to go secure final funding to do the rest of that construction. So we're just really proud that all of these partners, including Los Angeles County, have been engaged, working so hard together on this community-designed and community-driven river partner project. In a lot of other communities, they just dial up a consultant, they design it, they build it, done. Here, we've worked so carefully and long with all of our partners and community members to really do this right, so that our members will use it and help take care of it. So we have buy-in. Okay, so that was our project. Moving on, education, skills training, mentoring and stewardship. So we have, sorry, you're following along, so good. So we do our monthly first Saturday river cleanup events. We recently just had our annual Small Acreage Management Community Workshop on Saturday. Upcoming is our State of the Purgatory Conference, plug for that, happening on Saturday, May 10. We have a ton of different speakers from around the watershed there. Community eco-tourism and stewardship series. This coming Saturday, we're going out to Comanche National Grasslands in partnership with the US Forest Service for an auto tour. PWP is providing free lunch and drinks if anyone wants to join us. Plane ID workshops, film festivals, a host of other stuff coming up. Yeah, I'll keep moving. But in, also kids, strong collaboration with the Youth Club of Trinidad and a lot of the other partners. We have a ton of upcoming events for kids. Hiking and Viking Series, our very popular Fish Films and River Play Day, where the kids get to come down the river and stalk baby trout and play in the river safely with our local fire department water rescue team in the river and a bunch, a bunch of them. Young adult education and mentoring. Providing young adults with education, skills training and mentoring to work alongside professional land managers. So we're working with City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, and a lot of other partners through our second and recently awarded GoCo Stewardship Impact Grant to explore the possibility of developing a locally-based youth corps crew that would provide jobs and skills for our young adults, also help us maintain our local natural resources and amenities that we don't always have a lot of money to fund, and mentor these young adults towards getting jobs in the natural resource profession. Trails, land management, forest health, fuels mitigation, and wildlife projects. I know that sounds like a mouthful, but they're all kind of interwoven, so I thought I'd put them together. We've been doing a lot of work through the umbrella of the Purgatory Kuchars Collaborative Sister Watershed Project, because obviously, our two watersheds have a lot of overlapping interests. The North Lake State Wildlife Area and US Forest Service multi-phase project. We've been doing a lot of trail work and fuels mitigation up there. Next. We have an America the Beautiful project that was funded through Carr and Department of Agriculture, which is a separate fuels mitigation and forest health project on City of Trinidad property, plus a woody invasive and stream restoration work out on the eastern plains on private lands and also partnering with the state mayor board. Next, working with Los Angeles County to develop the county-wide community wildfire protection plan. Why that is so important is having a CWPP in place is required to secure a variety of forest management funding so that we can point to that plan, show that we have done the work and be able to apply for a lot of different funding to reduce the possibility of catastrophic fire in our watershed. Reducing human bear conflict. So we are very successful with our first bear grant. We bought bear-resistant trash cans for Los Angeles County and for the City of Trinidad, providing a lot of bear scraps, electric fencing for, for local folks. And we were just funded for a second bear grant. We're expanding our efforts to Aguilar, working very closely with Bob Holder. He was very excited to be able to expand these efforts out to Aguilar. But still providing resources here in Trinidad and elsewhere. Ag and other infrastructure projects. So ag infrastructure, we're working with local producers to do a more comprehensive assessment of needs for ag improvements. Working with the NRCS, the local conservation district, to fill gaps that aren't already being served. We're also working with the Army Corps of Engineers to finish a jetty jack mitigation plan in areas where the jetty jacks are hanging up in the air or otherwise dangerous and not providing real bank stabilization. We'll be able to, once this plan is complete, move forward to get funding to better stabilize these banks. River and watershed planning. Working with a ton of partners to assess and document collaborative water user project needs. Say the word "planning," everybody's eyes blaze over, but this planning gets us to a list of projects that we can point to the plan, say we've done our work, and we can then get funding. They don't like back-of-the-napkin designs anymore. You have to show that you've done your due diligence and stuffs. Again, there is a lot of planning fatigue in our watershed, which we totally understand. So this planning has been very much on a slow roll, probably to our funders who grin. But we have found that we need to plan a little bit, and then we do an on-the-ground project to show everyone how this works and that we're actually getting work done. And then we plan some more and do that. And this downtown community river park project has, is a result of that planning. Finally, river cleanup and water quality. We do on-the-ground cleanups. We're working with the unhoused group to find solutions. We're, we have a water quality working group that we welcome anyone who's interested in deep diving into water quality data to join us. Again, to develop a list of projects that would be broadly supported. We're not diving in anything controversial, but any projects that would be broadly supported to address some water quality issues in our watershed and doing educational workshops. And we did do a massive water quality sampling event last year from the headwaters to the confluence and a variety of stations. And we're working with the state-level river watch to possibly expand stations. So wrap-up. All of these projects are just examples of funding that can be secured for our community in other arenas as well if we're all working together. I know I'm reaching the required. These are uncertain times. If ever there was a time for us all to work together, it's now. We do believe we can figure out creative solutions to our problems coming down the pipe, and we can find alternative funding sources and more helping hands where the critical programs and services are being cut. I love this quote, "No one has the right to sit down and feel hopeless. There's too much work to do." That's probably why we're all exhausted. But we do believe when the going gets tough, the tough get moving. And again, can find solutions to these issues. So thank you in advance to everyone who's willing to be active in their community and give in whatever way and whatever level they're able. Volunteer with or otherwise support a local business or community organization. Help out your neighbors, explore new ideas for bartering, come up with other cool ideas. And please, especially in this climate, a lot of people are fired up. Please support your local county commissioners and county staff and city council members and city staff. Because behind the scenes, they are constantly having to make a lot of our decisions that we don't even know about, and they're trying to do the best they can for our communities. So thank you so much to everyone and all the partners involved. And here's my contact information, and I'm happy to talk with anyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Julie, and congratulations on turning a few dollars into an amount of money to make this project into competition. Congratulations to your group. And absolutely, we're here to support you and we'll do that. Commissioner, tell us what the makeup of the board is like. So what do each individual, you've got ag representation, you've got river representation?
Yes, our Purgatory Watership Partnership Board, we have ag producers. We have a county commissioner. We have the city watershed manager. We have Tom Perry that represents a variety of local community organizations. We have a firefighter. We have a broad array of board members. Pretty, pretty exciting with a lot of different perspectives.
Trout Unlimited?
And Trout Unlimited, exactly.
Well-represented there.
Yes.
You're a fantastic girl.
Thank you. You have a great board.
Julie, thank you so much. Have a great day.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
We have approximately 12 minutes for the next one. We have the Tri-State 9-11 Tribute Foundation, Mrs. Doug Harper. And if we need any additional minutes after that, definitely we'd be more than willing to, because we're going to have to interrupt the meeting at 10 o'clock.
Sure. Yeah, sure. I think I can make it through this, well, but.
There we go.
I've never been accused of being speedy in my presentation, but I'll try. John, over in Walselburg, so years ago, when he had the Vietnam Memorial Day. I'm from Lamar. My name is Doug Harper. Anyway, I came over and I witnessed what he did with bringing that traveling wall in. And the enthusiasm and the way in which our, you know, the community just really locked into that. It was neat. I really thank him. But anyway, long story short, just a few days ago, I was talking to John because what I've done in Lamar, I found at this Tri-State 9/11 Tribute Foundation 12 years ago, it was on about the 10th anniversary of 9/11, and there was not a lot being done to acknowledge and really remember what happened on that day. And long story short, I went to our county commissioners there to reuse the courthouse law, and we set a little honoring scenario out there where we guys shined our fire trucks and bleached cars and all that. And we had a little flyover and this and that. But it grew to the point where every year after that, we had a parade. That's grown, and now we have a mile and a half-long parade. We go out to the fairgrounds. We honor veterans and first responders. We feed them free out there, and then we charge other people a few bucks just for the meal, enough to recoup our. enough to recoup our interest. Long story short, this led to the point where six years ago, we decided to build a memorial as you come to Lamar, if you're saying that, when you come around the Kewa Mar curve, right there, we built the Tri-State 9/11 Tribute Memorial. Long story short, this patriotism, I tried, just like this gal that was talking in front, try and get as many people and kids and stuff involved in these kind of projects, so they all have ownership. And it also enhances this pride of patriotism and pride of their country. And again, I had a little, you know, a lot of high school kids carrying bricks out there and a brick wall when we were in the early stages of building it. We're about to finish it now. We've got our first life-size statue up there, bronze statue of a fireman, and it's, oh, T2T.org, Frank Silver, that tells the towers of building these houses for, you know, these first responder families and veterans. His brother, on that September 11th of 2001, was on the west side of the Hudson River. Long story short, he could, all the traffic was coming off, his brother was a fireman. He put all his gear on, ran two miles over the river towards the towers in time to die over there. His brother established this, you know, Tri-State 9/11, the memorial for T2T.org. Okay, this last year, in August, I got a phone call from a local ranger, and he said, "A friend of mine's coming up from New York and has offered to help you with your 9/11." I said, "What's his name?" He said, "His name is Will Jimeno, J-I-M-E-N-O." "Will?" I said, "Tell me Will's story." When the towers came down, there were two survivors that they pulled from the rubble 13 hours later. Will was one of those two, was heading his captain. And anyway, I called Will and thanked him profusely for, you know, making this offer. And I said, "What can you do?" He said, "I can talk." And I said, "Would you talk to our area kids?" And he said, "I'd love to." So I got the community building, I went to our both these people. We filled, the fire marshal said we could have 1,500 kids in there. We had 1,500 middle school and high school kids from Campbell, Viola's, Bridgette, I think Bridgette was there, AIDS, Plainview. The Plainview Schools called and said, "We're bringing 11 kids and four teachers. Is that okay?" But anyway, Will gave the most amazing, just, you know, talked to those kids. An hour and a half later, they were middle school and high school kids, and an hour and a half, you know, the kids, either using their phones or something, looking at their phones. These kids were locked in on Will like this, and some of them were crying. And it was just amazing. He, in the middle of explaining what had happened to him with all that pile, piles of, a rubor stuck through his leg, piles of cement on him. He said, "I made this goal to, you know, I wanted to, my goal was to make it through for my wife and my baby." Anyway, he did. And he said, now, he pointed to all these kids on both sides of the arena in this community building, and he said, "Every one of you guys are important. Every one of you guys need to say yes." Okay. It was remarkable. I mean, and the kids were came down, fist-pumped, you know, all that. The reason I'm here today is what I have witnessed in Lamar. And I've had the Will Jimeno story of dozens of times like this. I've had a lady from Iowa call me. Her brother was on the second plane that went in. She came out and honored her brother as our grand marshal. He was slated to be on the next flight of the Challenger, which, of course, he never made. But anyway, these are things, but our community has benefited so much from not only having the event, but having that memorial. Anybody coming through Lamar, when you come around the curve, just before you come to Lamar, you'll see the memorial. Go into the kiosk, and we've got a guest registry book there. Read what people have written. You know, the hairs are spinning over your back of your neck, and so I just, and it's remarkable. But anyway, I'm here to make an offer to tell you guys how that's important and how it's affected us in Lamar. And I would be more than happy to work, work with any committee, anybody that would like to set, it doesn't have to be a 9/11. It could be anything that, where you can involve kids and the community in a way in which to foster patriotism and love our country. That's what this is all about. We are 501(c)(3). We have no paid employees. Everybody in my organization are all volunteered. Will, in fact, I'll leave a picture. This is Scott Steerman, our artist for most of the city, that did our first, our first statue. This is, he's doing the face of Will Jimeno right now, because we're using Will as a second statue. We just had a fundraiser raise $40,000 for our last statue that will complete our memorial. And it's gonna be of Bryson Skidmore. Remember the Skidmore name from down there? Bryson was a young soldier that was in the army when 9/11 happened, but he ended up going into Kuwait and longing to Iraq. He was with a striker unit, and they were clearing a compound. Long story short, he came home, and all that burning smoke, the fitted uranium and all that stuff, he came down with a virulent form of cancer, and there were three or four buddies in the same unit as Will came down, and they all died. And anyway, Bryson, I want him to be our third statue. So we're gonna have law enforcement, fire, and a soldier up there to complete this. But I'm just making the offer to you guys, anybody that would, you know, want, if you guys would like to do something similar, I'd love to help you.
We've got several veterans sitting right out here that are with the Legion, and I'm sure they would be more than happy to talk to you about that.
I'd love, after I'm through here, when you go, I'd love to visit with you guys.
And Mr. Harper, would you have your contact information?
Yeah, I'll leave a bunch of, but I've got my cards. What I was gonna do, I passed, some of the, there's our brochure showing, it's got both the day of tribute that we're behind, one side is the memorial, if you open it up, and on the other side, it shows our day of tribute and some of the stuff that takes place on the Saturday closest to September 11th every year, before September 11th. But we do this, and Ryan put, told me, to make sure to tell you guys hello, and that he would love to visit with you on this memorial.
Well, that is, yes.
But I'll leave a bunch of these things. My name's in here.
Maybe you can put back on your chair while you're way up?
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. And there's, I have a bunch more stuff in here, but I'm gonna, in case, here's the artist that's doing all our work, I leave one of these for you guys as well. And then here, we just got National Press came out in, on a magazine for police, for the National Police Association. Anyway, they're doing an article that's featuring our, in the middle of the country, our memorial in Lamar. So I'm really thrilled with that. I think we've got a lot more stuff, and you guys are, you're busy, folks.
Well, indefinitely, we'll follow up and we'll pass that information on to the community, and I would think there's gonna be very much of a response.
One more sidebar. A couple of years ago, you guys are familiar with the Quilts of Valor, aren't you? The Quilts of Valor, you know, these ladies work close to some older veterans that are in health issues or, you know, anyway, I, ladies asked if they could be involved with our, you know, in one of our presentations. I learned in watching the value of that, between the public's reaction on one side and also the kids and stuff, it's neat. Springfield, I had a kid ask, long story short, Springfield now is asking, having one of their children go interview the veteran, get the story. The Quilts of Valor lady makes the quilt, and then they'll have an assembly in a school for the veteran. Anyway, this is just another enhancement of, you know, teaching these kids to remember their, you know, their history.
Mr. Harper, I want to thank you, and I want to always ask for your, your, your help.
I understand, yes.
Thank you so much, and we'll follow up with you.
Great. All right, I'll send all this stuff out there.
Thank you so much.
And thank you very much for allowing me to come in and visit with you all.
Yes, thanks to you for the work that you do.
You betcha. Well, I gotta give everything, the man upstairs, he's involved with this.
Thank you for reaching out, and thank you guys for showing up.
We are now, it is 10:00 a.m., and we're gonna go to the public hearing portion of this meeting. It is now 10:00 a.m., and we are gonna be opening up the MF 2025-001 by B&amp;L and Bryce from Denny Canyon Helium Plant, a proposed major facility located on County Road 179. This plant will be used to process helium and CO2. This public hearing is now open. At this time, let people get and give us, all of us, the rule of engagement as we go through this process. Anyone that wishes to provide testimony on this particular project, I ask that you do so in a very respectful manner. As the chairman of the board, I have the authority to get us back on track, and I will not take any offensive comments. And so let's get this, if you're gonna provide pro comment, that would be great, or against comment as well. And so at the end, the board is gonna go through the entire process, do an assessment, and take a vote on this particular project. And so anyone, at this point in time, I'm gonna be calling the San Luis County Land Use Director, Mr. Sean Rogan, to comment this morning. Your testimony is gonna be recorded under oath, and any statements that you make, basically once you have taken the oath, remain in the room, and we might have a follow-up questions as this vote goes through the, through the assessment of this particular project. So having said that, if we have any questions, please, as you come forward, please state them, and certainly at this point in time. Good morning, sir. I want to talk with you, and I want you to raise your right hand.
Family of penalty perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and position.
Sean Rogan. Hi, I'm Mr. Rogan.
Good morning, Mr. Rogan. Please proceed with your, with your assessment of this project.
All right, so this is through, we'll start helium. The object is, this is my first time doing this, so I'm not really sure what I'm doing here. They're wanting to do a helium plant, something else. They are going to be out towards painting helium. We did have our planning commission, meeting, planning commission did approve this. We did have a community outreach from one of the neighbors that they reached out during the committee and brought some concerns about noise mitigation, and that B&amp;L did work with them, support with them about reducing that noise mitigation. And it is a very, very good project, and it will have quite a few lines for us to use, and it'll be a good addition to our county.
Mr. Rogan, as I look at this, there, there were minutes from September 9, 2024, which of course were not in this capacity, acting as the county planning commission director. Do you have, can you provide us a little bit of history from that September 9 meeting and the relationship to the meeting that was, that took place, was it April 10?
April 10.
Can I just go, I believe that the minutes from September 24, September of 24, were just minutes that were considered at that planning meeting. It had nothing to do with, to me.
And give me one second, that one. Put that before you mean, so, before you mean before that one, but yes.
Family of penalty perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I have that. Please state your name and position.
Paula Bustaro, I'm the executive assessment, I'm also the secretary for the planning commission.
Thank you, ma'am. And I appreciate that. Would you repeat that statement? No, that's fine.
I just, the minutes that are in your packet from the September 9 of 2024 were minutes that were considered at their county commission meeting on that date. They have nothing to do with the meeting. The minute, the draft minutes for that meeting are a little bit, what did you say, 8:06? They were a little bit further down than the packet for meeting at Sean's time.
Very good. Thank you, thank you for the clarification, because that brings to a point now that, in a sense, and we can go into, maybe I'll have a question, that Commissioner Bustaro at the time was the director, and so now he may not, may not have any, he may not have to recuse himself, but that was back in the council.
Not because of the meeting. I do believe, how like Mr. Bustaro's speaking, I do believe he did at least have something to do with the application itself, so not necessarily the presenting of the meeting, but the application itself. So I'll defer to Mr. Bustaro on his involvement and how he left it perceived.
Very good.
Yeah, the, the, the application started when I was still planning my news director. The initial application came in at that time, so I did work on that some during that period prior to me becoming the county commissioner. So at that time, I'll have to abstain from voting on it, because I'm aware of a lot of it. So if there's a thing there, I would probably take it in the conversation.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. Back to you, sir. The, there was a list of constituents that were notified about this project. What was the response, if any, from, I mean, you have CDA, you have DNR, and others that were notified of this, the application for this particular project?
Yes, they were all working with the project. CDA did bring up, you know, that, some concerns about, it's, they were worried about state highway access and wouldn't know the existing volume traffic that was coming through on that, and, and they wanted to know about the size of vehicles that were going to be going onto the state highway. But other than that, that was the only from that list. And like I said, we did get a letter from Fox Gaming Ranges, but they have been working with B&amp;L on noise issues and traffic situations.
Thank you. Mr. Rogan, Commissioner, is there any questions? And maybe, maybe directed toward Mr. Rogan. Mr. Brunnack, please raise your hand.
Family of penalty perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and position.
Phil Brunnack, Los Angeles County Sheriff.
So a question for both of you, maybe one of you can answer, but I see these trucks are getting really heavy for our little county gravel road, and then where it exits off there, where the entrance is, whose responsibility is that to keep that road maintained and to do the actual bill? Isn't there a current, current usage planning, they went through planning, zoning, who would, who would maintain that road?
There is a little bit of, we're trying to figure a little bit of it out.
There is a road use agreement that B&amp;L has agreed. The road use agreement addresses damage done by their vehicles and to help mitigate damage done to the county.
And how many trucks, these heavy trucks, are there today?
I know during construction it will be more, but I will let B&amp;L kind of talk more about it when they come up here, but I know that they're planning on maybe once or twice a week, Julie.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and ask those questions in the public hearing in a second. Another question, Commissioner, ask any follow-up questions?
No, no.
Thank you. But, Mr. Brunnack, there was a question on the document that was forwarded to us. There is a, an assumption that this applicant is going to be looking at the road use agreement in a different perspective than previous applicants that we have had. Can you bring us up to date how the upgraded new road use agreement took place and why are we going with the amendments?
Okay, Commissioner, when Mr. Renewables sought an application applied for the installment of, potential installment of wind generators and solar array in the eastern part of the county, as part of their application, please correct me, Commissioner, Mr. Brunnack, part of the application was the ending of the road use agreement, and we had And we had discussions in-house about the damage that any of these developments are having on county roads. So that was in, I think, 2023, the end of 2022, 2023. And from that, then, we slowly developed a road use agreement that would have placed in June last year. So a prior applicant to remove helium in that same vicinity had been applied in 2022, long before we had a road use agreement imposed. Since June last year, a road use agreement has been imposed.
And, Mr. Ronacap, since we are on the subject of roads, there is a paragraph from private citizens, you know, the county road is too narrow, the county road needs to be widened, and then of course it needs to be maintained. What is the plan for the San Luis County to respond, A, to the private applicant, I mean, to the applicant, as well as to the regular citizenry, as far as the width and the condition of the road?
The width of the road, Commissioner, would, for us to go for the county road and bridge, if I'm to win by those roads, would be an astronomical amount of money. And I know where we get the materials from, we have a few pits in the CAM area, but to go in and widen those roads even five more feet, I guess would be close to a half a million dollars a mile. It almost would be as expensive as being, because we're going to have to widen, stabilize, bring materials up, capital, so that's going to be a considerable hit.
Then the follow-up question, and that will be, have you checked a hauling truck taking helium out of this particular property onto those county roads? Is there enough space, safe space, for two vehicles? If there is a private citizen going forward, and if you have one of these rigs, can they maneuver the load safely?
In my opinion, I guess, kind of depends on how you define safely. In my opinion, they can get by one another. If it's, if it's, has been or is moist up, there's a possibility that vehicles get off on the shoulders, especially a fully loaded 18-wheeler that they slide in the ditch. I think that's happened with the, with the, with the, pulling helium out of that area.
Is there enough speed limit signage posted up there? Because I know we have, we have law enforcement that may, may give us direction, but I know we have the CDOT posting regulations as far as the county posting speed limit. If there are none, I see something, we might proactively post some signage up there and see what, for the section of the road until they get into the main road, what is, what is the appropriate speed limit to avoid any accidents?
I don't recall any speed limits being established by the Board of County Commissioners out in the CAM area, so the speed limit would default back to state statute and for a straightaway road, like a, with plenty of sight distance. I believe that speed is 50 miles an hour. And if you get into a more rural section that has a lot of tourist turns, a lot of sight distance, a reasonable level, because they don't have the firm, I think it's 45, 35 or 45. But if the board wants to change those speed limits from what is defaulted statute, the board has a capability to do it.
Would it be feasible to put, like, a pull-out if it'd be to where, instead of widening the whole thing, just put a pull-out, say, three semis long, where a truck could get over or a vehicle could get over and allow a passage, and then get back on, and that might help with the weather considerations also?
That's a, that's a good thought, Commissioner. We could do something like that, but I think that burden would be put on to the developer and not the county.
Yes, and I have a question, John, you can ask it or maybe Phil. What's the distance from where you come out of the, where the facility is going to be located? When you get back on 179.2 to get to 160, what's the distance?
Mr. Conrad, would you please come out and then let us where you may now? And now we're going to kind of interrupt this, this conversation. And please, right here.
The testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name.
I'm Peter Contra. I'm chief operating officer of B&amp;L Land Price in Los Angeles.
Thank you. So I guess a question, Commissioner Bustaro.
Yes, approximately 14 miles.
Phil, was I reading that whatever thing before I gave it to the floor? You don't, you wait, hold your words, Mr. President.
Mr. Rogan, please stand by. We may have some follow-up questions for you as well. And good morning, Mr. Conrad, but a couple of questions that I personally have for you here. There is a letter that was received by your agency as far as noise disturbances, and then you responded something to the effect that we will work on that. Can you please respond on that, and what does that mean? As far as, there are some neighbors that are, I guess, defending greater than a mile. And so one of the, one of the comments is the noise 24/7. How do you intend to mitigate that? You know, one of the, one of the comments in here, let me continue here. One of the comments says, you know, the reason we move out to the country is because we want peace and quiet. But yet, this is a private property that also, I think, the neighborly thing to do is responding. You did so, but can you extrapolate on that, just a little?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity. I do have a kind of agenda that I could go through, but I'll go right to it.
Please go and answer the question, and then you can go back to your.
Okay. No, you know, it's really important. First of all, I'd like to thank you, commissioners, county staff, public, Jackson family. I myself am joined by Trent Spri, our CEO, Andy Wynon, our senior landman, and they may have some help in any adjustment. But, you know, as you touched upon earlier in the follow-up presentation, you know, with this good neighbor policy, we're trying to proactively engage with the locals out there, try and reasonably address any concerns during operations. And so as it goes to the noise, you know, we're dedicated to minimizing industrial noise at the site. And how we do that is optimize design, optimize location. So design, we, you know, we engineer this into the equipment, and pipe system operate at peak efficiency and inherently reduce the noise generation. We use low noise equipment selection number feasible. We also have strategic equipment placement, trying to put the more noisy emitters located at the property boundaries or away from the residents in the area. It's a remote area, it's, you know, it's very sparsely populated, it's over half a mile away. In addition, we want to be always compliant with regulatory statutes. And we are trying to proactive the noise mitigation. And so what you're referring to is that we are prepared to implement soundproofing measures on key noise generating equipment, and install sound barriers as necessary to ensure that we're complying with the regulatory limits. And so we've talked to individuals out there and others that we take this seriously. We're trying to be good neighbors, and we're trying to limit the amount of noise. You know, we take that good neighbor policy very seriously. And, you know, the equipment does make noise out there, but there's ways to mitigate that. And we can't limit all the noise, but certainly offset the property in areas of people, residences, they shouldn't hear it all. If I may, can I?
Please go ahead.
Okay. No, again, we really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys in the county to hopefully approve this. You know, sorry, I want to step in and correct this. So this helium and CO2 recovery plant would be served by wells that we have drilled and are currently drilling. In September, last summer, 2022, I'm sorry, 2024, we drilled one well, it was a kind of assessment well, and it had good results. And since then, we actively permitted and drilled more wells. Today, we're currently in drill well four, a five to six well campaign. It's pretty good. You know, we're really excited about this opportunity. We're with the county, our neighbors, the Jacksons, because this is a very good opportunity, I mean, for B&amp;L, but also for the surface owners, the mineral owners, the county itself, there's a production tax rate. You know, we have job creation locally and farther out. But, you know, this, this would imply local dirt contractors, use local rig company, local welders, electricians, roustabouts, mechanics. In addition, there's support services that help, you know, we have supports local businesses with people that we stay with. We have, you know, hotels, fuel stations, restaurants. And then also, again, we provide royalty and other payments to service the landowners in the county itself and the production tax.
If I could ask you a question, how many employees do you think that you're operating?
What's the plant's operation phase? We have one full-time employee working the plant and the wells, and then we have support periodically coming out to help on maintenance and fueling and issues like that.
And during the construction phase, what would that look like?
Well, the CDOT put together that, you know, the count there, and it's a lot. I mean, you've got a lot of engineers, you've got electricians, welders, mechanics, all putting equipment together. Some of it's prefab, some of it's fabbed on-site. And it's two, it's one plant that's really two different processes. The CO2 unit will be the, recover the CO2 will be the front of the plant, helium in the second part of the plant. That's because it's natural geology, the gases originate in CO2, helium, and nitrogen. So I don't have a really good estimate on the number, but it's in the dozens. That would be there for the construction. And it's in the single digits for ongoing maintenance and production operations.
The question that was asked, Mr. Conrad, earlier, how many heavy trucks? I know when, when you're going to be pulling these trucks, I mean, it says that these are going to weigh between 65,000 and 70,000 pounds. And so during construction, what kind of traffic do you think is going to happen? And then how many of these trucks, once the construction is completed, how many of these 65,000 to 70,000 pound trailers are going to be working and out on a weekly basis, monthly basis?
Yeah, so I'm not sure if you guys have been provided the CDOT, our response to the CDOT request showing the construction, post-construction. I don't know if Shawn has that. But to answer your question, before I start to answer that, we all need to recognize that it's already happened out there. Desert Eagle operates a helium plant out there, they're on a construction phase. They have daily workers that go to the plant. They have daily helium trailers that go up and down the road, the same weights, current conditions. But to answer your question, it's estimated that the plant construction will take about four weeks. And we'll have, you know, some oversized loads, some standard loads, some light vehicles, fuel and product. But approximately during the construction phase, for heavy trucks, it's pretty quite minimal. We've got a crane we've got to bring out there, but, you know, the count, if you want me to go through it, it's for the plant pad, we need about 80, this is the total back and forth trips. So we have 82 for the plant, 95 for the power and fuel, for the CO2 plant about 120, and for helium plant 100 during the construction phase. Takes place over four weeks, so it's not, it's a good amount of traffic, but it's not a whole lot of traffic, if that makes sense.
Close to, what, 450 then in that period, construction phase? Just doing the rough math.
That's over four weeks, so 28 days. Most of those are light vehicles, most of those are the engineers, like per, per dog construction, going back and forth for roustabout crews.
And these, these questions, they seem, but I'm doing it so that everybody that's listening and who's saying will be aware of what's going to be impacting them, so.
Sure, I understand. It's important. We understand what's looking, we got our eyes wide open. During the post-construction phase, you know, you're looking at about a dozen fuel and water trips per month. You're looking at about a dozen maintenance trips back and back per month. And then the products, we're looking at about 170 CO2 truck products and 30 helium products per month. That's if the plant has a maximum production potential. It's going to take some time to ramp up to that production, so all be lesser matters than that.
Do you have a dust mitigation plan during construction?
Yes, we do. We work with PBC, who's an experienced dirt contractor or something. Yeah, we minimize the dust, water loads necessary, no magnesium cores, we're talking about anything like that right now.
One, highlighted this just from my own learning occasionally on your documents. Occasionally, water trucks will empty fuel and recover tanks in front of commercial disposal. Period. The fuel tanks and fluid recovery tanks for replacement thing is still contained. That implies some of those things. What occasionally water trucks will empty fuel recovery? And.
Just explain that if you will, for a second.
Yeah, so the field does not necessarily increase water. There's some water vapor in the gas. And in the process of processing the gas, there is fluids that are recovered. It's very minimal, and those fluids will be periodically taken to caption containers. And so all of our spill prevention measures include, you know, secondary berms around impacted fluid or fueling tanks to many spill or mitigating spill to make her, which we don't think will happen. But, so the water is very minimal. The fuel itself, right now, we are leaning towards natural gas turbines, which is a boost for all of us, because it's a cleaner fluid to be the generate the power source for the plant. And we're looking at compressed natural gas as a way to fuel that natural gas turbine. And again, that'd be about a dozen trucks, dozen trips per month to fuel that. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Do you anticipate putting up sound walls just on certain sites?
You know, we're, that's, that's a definite possibility. We're not saying that we're going to do that until we figure out if it's beyond the regulatory compliance. We do recognize, we want to be good neighbors, we want to work with them, we want to work with the community. We don't want to have this big impact community that, you know, doesn't like this. But we want to work with them, but yeah, to be planning on putting sound mediation more appropriate. As said before, we want to live in certain side of regulatory framework, comply with that. And we have plans, if needed, to put in sound mediation, sound barrier walls.
I've worked a lot with oil and gas, and putting them in restrooms. And when they were put in, there's a lot of residential areas, they didn't need the state, you know, state noise standards, but they still, when, San Luis, I did many site locations in 10 companies when that noise just kind of, you know, it just, it sounds loud. It was because when it's at night, it really is, it's dead silent. It's annoying, I guess. On your application, on your noise level, it says the plant, its equipment will comply with the requirements of Table 14A-3, ordinance number 743 of the city of Los Angeles. That's not us, we're not the city, we don't have these ordinance. They must have taken that for that kind of city, the Los Angeles.
Oh, my.
County is, you know, legal by.
Los Angeles County.
That state statute, we don't have a noise ordinance for our county, legal by state statute.
I apologize, that was a mystery class. But no, I certainly recognize this scenario, it's very quiet, very dark. It's important to try and preserve as much of that as we can. And, you know, I think that also is important to recognize. I know that there has been passed grievances about Desert Eagle's operations and the noise. Well, it's a little different for us, because we're like situated not at the canyon's edge. One of the things that Desert Eagle's plan is, it sits near the big canyon. And that canyon echoes and channels the sound to great businesses. Ours is in a rangeland that is sparsely populated. The nearest residence is over half a mile away, owned by the Jackson family. And it's, other than that, we're farther out the residence. But it's, it's not near canyons, it's like in rangeland or whatever, where there's not a chance for the sound to be amplified. to be amplified or channeled down a certain direction. So I think that is some of the reason that it's so noisy out there for Desert Eagle plan.
The, I appreciate the fact that the San Antonio County Emergency Manager requested a fire prevention, protection of witness one on the plan. And he was asking, is there a possibility to get a ten thousand gallon water container for in the event that there would be a fire? And of course, the, your company agreed to, yes, that would be, that would be, that would not be an obstacle. So you may have to comply with that, so that's really great. And then I really, not knowing much about this type of gas, that is not combustible, which is something really good to have. However, as the water continues to deperform and the land is pretty dry, I'm glad that you're going to have that measure of water accessibility there. And also the safety data sheets that will be provided by to the emergency manager from San Antonio County. And so let me go back once again to this, you mentioned that there are not any neighbors within twenty hundred feet, which is slightly over half a mile. What is the reaction of those neighbors to this project?
Yeah, I'll address that one second, address some of the things you also mentioned. Yeah, we have been trying to be proactive in how we permit this with the community, with Los Angeles County and regulators and so on. And so, you know, meeting with the emergency response manager was one of our first priorities. And we take health, safety in mind very importantly. But yes, we are more than happy to put out that ten thousand gallon system to, in the event, help with any type of fire prevention measures. And you're right, helium and CO2 are inert gases, they're non-combustible, they don't light on fire. And you know, it really is, you know, the risk of fire is really limited because of that, the risk of fire is those equipment out there. But it's very low, it's all electric equipment. But yes, I was trying to determine how the best, we want to provide that ten thousand gallon system to our application, we want to provide the CO2 helium safety deviations to our application as well. And then, I'm sorry, your question was on.
There are no neighbors within twenty hundred, yes.
Yes, so Andy, why not, is our landman, we did notification offset to all the surface owners out there. And Mr. Everett and Flo Jackson and the rest of the family are here, they're the ones that were primarily notified because they're the ones that were required, our notification process by the area that was notified. And of course, the plant's on their location and they, everything was received positively. We do, you know, Fox Hills was represented by Mr. Mark Jackson in the last county planning meeting. We did meet with him separately after the meeting. You know, again, he wasn't against us, he was just had concerns, and we're trying to adjust those concerns and those. So we've had very favorable response and favorable back and forth, good neighbor policy interaction.
Thank you. That being in my district, I'm the one that feel complaints, so that's why I'm asking these redundant questions, but you guys understand that when you're delivering cattle, there's, that's why this pull-off would be a real benefit to the Jacksons also, when they're trying to deliver semi-loads of cattle. You can have somewhere to pull off and let somebody go buy whoever bits are first, but that's why I brought that up.
I appreciate that, Mr. Haas. No, you know, I did want to talk a little about the road use agreement. And before I get there, just a couple more comments if I may. You know, the other concern that was brought up at the last planning meeting was light. And we certainly recognize that it is a dark area and there's benefits to that. And so we are committed to trying to reduce the light as much as we can. What that means is we're reducing light intensity, limits insulation height to limit the spill point of the light onto the area offset, using LED fixtures, low color temperatures when feasible, turn off the lighting when at night will not be used, using shielding to avoid lighting fixtures that feel still possible, proactive engagement, folks to understand and make sure we address that. We talked about the noise, talked about the noise input. And the only other things I wanted to make sure to bring up is that we did meet with Los Angeles County Road Bridges. And at that time, we were presented with the road use agreement. I do have a question back to you guys, is that road use agreement doctrine or made by the county commissioners or is that something that Road and Bridges did on their own? Because it seems to me like it was kind of, I don't really answer that question.
Yes, Road Bridge developed it on their own, they have secret measures and permission to operate because they're meaning that in due order, we should be able to.
Okay. You know, we certainly want to, we recognize that our activities are going to impact the roads out there. And we recognize that there needs to be things done to help the maintenance of that road, the safety features itself. And we have not entered a road use agreement yet, that was misspoken earlier. We're ready to, as the road use agreement states, basically enter that agreement months or month prior to the start of your construction operations. We do have concerns about the road use agreement. The road use agreement, as it was presented to us at the meeting, it seemed like it was, as it reads, is that we are held accountable, responsible for the road almost in its entirety. But that's, we're trying to understand that road use agreement better, when in fact, Desert Eagle is currently using that road a lot and driving dirt in production phase, making a produce thing out of it. All we know is drill some wells out there and, you know, we're concerned that it just, you know, we're becoming economically burdened by that. Now, I understand that the county may not have the money to do pullouts and certainly the widening roads, that's a big, that'd be a big project for all of us to do, but you know, it's certainly like to have the opportunity to clawback Desert Eagle to this agreement or make it more fair, we think. We're just concerned, like, I mean, as written right now, we take over all these projects we're talking about at the benefit of other operators, like Desert Eagle or other facilities that could happen in the future.
Good point, I think, you know, that is for in-house conversation and consideration, but we, I personally have to.
What was the last person?
No, I said definitely going over that. However, knowing that the road use agreement from the previous application was not consistent in their after the game to be, so it happens that two operators are going to be using that particular road. So I think from my perspective, we need to perhaps have a conversation internally, but I'm not certain that at the end of the day, it's to be that we're going to make any promises.
I understand that.
Understanding that we're an art and business and school, hard knocks, you know, we learn from our mistakes and you know, you're the guy on the first end of that, and we got to move forward, so.
You might understand, I'm learning every day.
And again, this might be for either one, Mr. Rogan or you. B and L will post the appropriate bond of five thousand dollars, performance bond for the major facility. I'd like for this, with this complaint application, five thousand dollars, I just, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Well, I, because of a gas exploration, I guess, as I read this and I, once again, you know, based on the knowledge of helium, it appeared to be just small, but nonetheless, it meets the regulations and the conditions of all state and county, we're okay with that.
Great.
Yes.
No, again, we are, I think, the opportunity to bring this, you know, good project to the county, it could help us, I think it benefits many economically, maybe helps bring a product that is a critical resource to our country. And we should be proud, Los Angeles County has these type of minerals there that we can explore and develop.
So you mentioned that there is a shortage of helium worldwide. Is, did you foresee this material being exploited?
Uh, yeah, you know, so helium's got two proprietary properties, according to recognized, and liquid form is the coldest substance on earth. So there's a lot of applications with Department of Defense, NASA. In the simplest terms, literally like people in cargo surrounded by liquid helium to avoid getting burned up from combustibles. That helps to do it up. At the same time, that NASA burns hydrogen as their fuel source, liquid helium as the hydrogen's being used up, it becomes coming down again to safely protect everything. And the gases formed, helium is an inert gas, which means it's monotomic, it's a reactive thing. So it's used in a lot of sterilized environments to make computer chips, semiconductors, MRI machines, leak detection. And shorting a few questions, yeah, helium is a, it's a rare element that has no duplicate and is hard to find economically, it's scarce, and it'll always be something that is great value.
Thank you, sir. We should present any more questions, Mr. Haas, if you have. Sir, have a seat, and I'm going to call on anyone else that would wish to provide a testimony on or against this particular project. And that, that would be extended to anyone online as well as, sir, please come on up. Please raise your right hand.
So I'm very proud of your penalty, for jury, the test twenty, you're about to give away the true of all truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name.
Andrew Schultz. I'm here because we've been working with this company since the beginning of everything. I'm speaking because I'm an enthusiast of the outdoors of water. My family hunts, ranches, farms, all the above. And this company has been working in hand with CDPHG, ECMC, maybe not so much with CDPHG, but all their regulatory stuff that they've had to already do is, I mean, we all know the state of Colorado is pretty they're pretty hard up on their regulations, in other words. The water regulations, you know, the stormwater management, stuff like that, I agree with. There's some regulations, you know, the rig mats and whatnot for the oil impact, when we've got thousands of square feet of liner that have to go into our landfills, you know, after, you know, whatnot. But I'm just here to speak for them and, and I've worked hand in hand with them more than anybody around here. I don't normally, I'm not good at speaking, as you can see, like you guys. And I just wanted to express myself and know that, you know, we've been here thirty years, we just celebrated our thirtieth year. I've been with the company twenty years, and June fifth will be my twentieth year here. I've worked in oil and gas with XTO, Pioneer, Ogrys, Evergreen, and the impact that they're going to be doing is way less than, you know, what we have west of the interstate. I'm not saying that's good or bad, but I'm just saying that what they're going to be doing is going to be very, very minimal to what we already have in the, in the community. Their compressor sites are going to be, in my opinion, a lot smaller, you know, they're going to have less horsepower, they're going to have less sound, you know, a lot less traffic on the county roads. I know it sounded like a lot of traffic, but you know, what have we had up there throughout the years, Sarcio Canyon, Wet Canyon, Borough Canyon, Longs Canyon, all of those are county roads. And my time up there, we don't necessarily work as much, you know, after COVID and whatnot hit, they kind of went into in-house and they like to spill your workers and whatnot, you know. But I never once saw them having to make road improvements. It was always a county blade, it was always skeeter, you know. And like you said, I know things have to change, but it's hard to be when you're on the first of the list. And that being said, in my opinion, that road has been neglected a little bit, more so than our local roads here. And I know there's less population out there, and that may be a reason, and I know it's way out there, I'm not, you know, excluding anything, but maybe, maybe we can do some more as, and I'm not saying you guys haven't done road improvements out there, but maybe we can help them out if there is things that need to be added. Because like you said, the, you know, the cattle deliveries and trying to get, you know, water tanks or whatever in and out, it's, it's a big deal out there and it's everybody's livelihood. But from what I've seen, the impact of the locations and their stormwater management and, and what they're doing to preserve the land that's there and be under compliance, it's, I can speak firsthand with these guys in there. They do not try to, you know, if something does happen, it's minimal, it's maybe, and a lot of it's because, you know, their cows are trampling silk fence or, you know, things like that. And then they in turn get written up for it because they're the ones that have to maintain it. For them to assume liability, and I just learned about that, to assume liability of the whole road, when you've got others up there that you can't control, and if they're traveling in bad conditions, when we normally have to shut down during, you know, if it's bad enough and the state writes them up for any little rut that they make, you know, so like, we're complying by that, but there's a lot of people that don't know the, what we have to do and what the state requires. So if they're fixing other people's, you know, kids or whatever that are trashing the road, then they have to fix it. I don't necessarily, that's neither here nor there, but I'm just, it's hard for them to, to assume that liability in that sense too, but yeah.
And you know, thank you so much, Mr. Schultz, for your comments. The responsibility for the county now is to do an assessment, speed assessment of what's happening out there, that's why I had mentioned that earlier on, perhaps for our local sheriff, we can do a traffic stack, that's one thing. And something else that is also happening through the Energy Mineral Impact Assistant grant fund that we have, who are the state department of border affairs. There, there is a fund, or there used to be a fund, on which Commissioner Hatt sits on that executive board. And as we ask for grants to make in some of these impacted roads, by the energy operations, that fund continues to dwindle to the point of almost minimal. So we'll see where, where we go as far as the partnership with our state agencies. So we will definitely look into the speed limits and so on and the load conditions. But also, you know, you mentioned the CDPHG, we might not think that they are involved with it, but anytime there's going to be water, who knows exactly, you know, what kind of noise sign they, they would end up being. And I know Mr. Conrad mentioned this, you know, to us, is the protection of the environment. And on the project right here, clearly the state says there's no endangered species on that particular part of the county, so that's really important to us. The other portion is, is the comment here, you know, the, and then I'll read this, the, these truck drivers drive like maniacs. That's exactly the document that we have in front of us. So maybe it is by posting speed limits, by doing some proactive measures on our behalf. And you know, to put all of them, whoever is driving on that road, to say they drive like maniacs, well, I'm reading the statement that's in front of me, right? And so also, when it comes to the Energy and Carbon Management Commission, the, all the regulations, of course, the county and the state are all going to be involved in, if you will, we may have accessibility and authority over the surface part of the project. Down pole, that's going to be the ECMC mission, you know, which at the end of the day, we are, I mean, compelling with so many, so many rules and regulations. But thank you for your testimony.
We've appreciated Commissioner Hatt and having worked for purgatory about the construction, another contractor. And Bernie hired me way back in the day, and I ran the blade, both the blade and the maintainer. And he did whatever he could to make sure that he had a good relationship with the neighbors. And I did build pull-offs with the Dozer, and it was an additional cost to purgatory, but a small cost, so you guys know, compared to the goodwill that you're, you're going to give with your neighbors.
Sir, and I agree with your sentiments, but if you want that, that contract that bad, you do whatever it takes to make it work. Yeah, we've, you know, we've worked with them for over two years now. We've never, we have had additional work change orders, and I've never, I've never changed anything on our projects just to keep that. You know, because nobody likes to hear, "Hey, we, we hit rock," or "We gotta, we gotta get our hammer out here, we gotta dig this," you know? Nobody likes to hear that because then they're like, "Are they telling the truth, or are they not?" You know? So it's like, "Hey, we are doing this, we have hit this, but there's no additional cost" because it's, I'm not trying to be petty about this situation. So, yeah, we're, we're here to work with whoever, and whether it be landowners or, you know, because we're on projects over on Sailvist or Ranch where that, that project is very, you have neighbors that are constantly attacking you because that's, that's a whole different story. But I mean, compared to what they're doing out there, it's, you know, it's, I think it's a good thing for the community and I think it's a good thing for the Jackson family too, that have developed all this land and worked their whole lives for it, Mr. Everett Flo, and now they hopefully get to, you know, enjoy a little bit of it instead of just working, you know? The reason I brought up the pull-offs, I'd hate to see this pot of cow tip over on a wet bay when we gotta do that. That's, you know, I've seen that happen, I've helped turn them back up, so. And I want, I forgot to thank you guys for protecting our amendment, all, all of our constitutional rights. Sheriff Navarette, I just wanna thank you guys for that because it's, it means a lot to try to get some more, some common core back into our politics instead of the woke ideology, I guess I can say.
Yeah, I really appreciate those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conrad?
Yeah, I have just a couple follow-up comments from that. You know, I think Mr. Jackson, the last meeting, really highlighted that, you know, this field, I believe, is 40 miles far on that road. Appreciate Mr. Darkham's, "There is root of past, is barely, and full of prior history." But I just wanna point that this is, County Road's ending a very important economic avenue for the county. I mean, we have a lot of, and so hopefully that bring county money, attention to that road, which I just saw get diverted on the other.
Thank you. And one follow-up question for you, sir, since you're here. As far as the reclamation, that's what we're 23 minutes from now, and those wells have to be kept. The ground can be brought up to its original condition and to recycle whatever pumps, whatever wells, whatever equipment is there. What is the process that your company will use? And I know it's in writing some place, I need to get them to.
Yeah, the final reclamation process for the wells is a little different than the plant side itself, but we're working with Everett, with Bo Jackson, and family, you know? So some of our new wells have been gravel access to the wells. Our plant side self have gravel in appropriate position, placement and stuff like that. And so the final reclamation, one looks at like, really want us to restore the land, re-contour, re-sue the topsoil. So in the process of creating location, Andrew might be the best people to answer this question. But in the process of creating the location, we will stop out the topsoil, we'll put preventive measures from our management, we'll put silk fencing or bottles around that to prevent the sediment from being run it off. So it's reserved there, we also hydroseed it so that it starts germinating some vegetation. At the final reclamation, we put that all back and we re-contour, re-sue the vegetation, then we're on the hook for, until the vegetation reaches a certain requirement, then we release them that long. We're bonded. But at the same time, some of these development activities worked well with the Jackson family ranching operations where they wanna have new access to their, to their lands or have a different, you know, different area of access that they've had before. So we wanna work with them in concert and determine what our final reclamation looks like.
Thank you, and I wanted to make that point because some of the state regulations, as you go through the oil and gas, new regulations, you would require for those roads who actually would be taken out, which by the way, in our comment was, if the private owner, the private landowner wishes to keep those roads, that's gonna be after them, that's a private property rights. And so I wanted to put that clarification out there. At the end of the day, it's not the county's business to enforce that on a private property, you would reclaim, and you would open the material. That's gonna be an agreement between you and the lesor of that particular property.
So have you stopped the state first?
I have. And so at this time, once again, thank you, stand by, I'm going to call on anybody else. Ma'am, come up. Good morning, please raise your right hand.
So on the environment penalty and perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And please state your name.
I'm Florence Jackson, I'm an owner. And I just want, well, I'll comment first on the roads. We do not have any signs on speed limits out there right now, and we have it. And just for the people living out there, I think it'd be a good idea, so. And we have very good standing with Blue Star, we're very honest people.
Well, thank you, ma'am, and I can tell you that we will pay attention to that comment. And we will write some speed signs within that stretch of highway.
Yeah, well, it'd be good because none of the, none of the gravel roads down there have speed limits. And I feel like with the passes, the Desert Eagle and Blue Star plays, why can't you guys work out something through ways and do the roads, you know? That's my opinion. And I know Desert Eagle plays in their passes, we ought to get some roads out there, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
And they already, the well that they drilled, we did, you could see it, back north of the house we said a year ago.
Yes.
And they've done, they've got it reclaimed and got grass like this on it, so.
That was our interim reclamation. Straighten down the strip area, initial development.
And we're very glad they're a part of the community.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Please come up.
So on the environment penalty and perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. And please state your name.
I'm Denise Shaka, I am Foni Everest's daughter. I have been in on this process since the beginning, and I wanna say Blue Star Helium has treated my parents just wonderful. They, they went to them when they were on to test wells, and they said, "Hey, you know, where would you like us to test? You know, do you think there's water there?" And they drilled in the places where my dad thought there might be water, so that they could drill, do their test well. Because they were gonna do that anyway, but we're working with my parents. So I think, I wanna say thank you guys for that. And they called and checked on my parents and just kind of see how they're doing. And I think that's a positive thing to know that they're, they're doing that. The reclamation my mom talked about, she's, and the grass is like, it's crazy, it's like, and so they're doing that, and they're proactive now. I feel like this is a good company, and I truly believe it'd be good for the Villagoan area. The roads used to, like five or 10 years ago, if it rained, I could not even get out there. It was just terrible, I would get stuck, or I'd call mom and dad, have to come and get me. But now the roads are better, the gravel is better. We've always had it where, when you pass someone, "Does someone come, can you slow down, get over?" It's just a common courtesy thing out there, and there's not that much traffic out there either. So it's kind of one of those things that we're just used to. And so that was important. The environment, I think they will take care of our environment. They're really good about, you know, making sure everything's up to code. And trips always come, my mom and dad saying, you know, "If you see anything, let us know, we'll be on top of it." And there's never been any problems with the drilling of the wells, so I don't think the plan would be any different. So anyway, there's any questions for me? Okay.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Conrad, on the list of proposed drilling of wells in the next few years, can you highlight year '25, '26, and so on? What is the, for the record, what is the number of wells that you are planning to build?
It's hard to give a definitive number there. What I can tell you is that we have a process, we go through the ECMC, and they have these called oil and gas development plans. And our first oil and gas development plan is called Black to Pegasus 1. And what that included was these five initial wells that were currently joined now. And it covers a pretty large area, like spaced out about a mile apart. And then that oil and gas development provides a vehicle for us to infill drum. And then the infill joint is dependent on the wells' productivity and its reservoir range. So what I can tell you is that there's more wells to come. And they're gonna go through that ECMC process. In general, this project's probably got a life of 15, 25 years. But, you know, it's with the bit, I mean, we've got good results so far, and we're here now to start producing. More wells to come, but I can give you the definitive answer, it's on the reservoir characteristics and the project. Thank you.
Thank you. I think looking at our county assessor, and I think I do have a question. I'd like to entertain that.
So on the environment penalty and perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I do, and please state your name and position. Jodi Amado, Los Angeles County Assessor.
Well, good morning, ma'am, and thank you for standing by. My, when, when you gave us an update right now, and then of course we have the challenge of providing more services to, if you will, respect the personal of the road.
Yes.
In a year that property taxes have gone really minimized.
Correct.
The, as this project is in the process of completely assess valuation of both the production and the property, perhaps?
Well, that area will see an increase to those entities.
Yes, so from your perspective, I know that is always welcome, economic activity.
Correct.
Both for the private owners, as well as for providing any FDP in longevity, so on and so forth, but on the other hand as well. You know, we, we bend backwards in this county, I tell you what, we are, I, I know that in trying to provide all services as needed for the entire community, we have about 1,500 miles close to a county road. So my question to you, Mr. Amado, is, as we go through the process, what is your forecast of the assess valuation as we go through this? And I know that is, I don't want you to get down to...
If I had my crystal ball, I could answer that question, but I left that at home today. But I will give you my best, my best intelligent and educated guess. We have currently, today is the deadline for Desert Eagle to report back to my office their production for 2020, for last year, for 2024 and 2025. So I will have those numbers, hopefully, if they arrive at my office today. And I could give you a better projection, but without seeing them, I can just give you my best guess. We are going to see some increased production off of the helium, off of the pipeline. And I know it's not long extensive pipeline, it's just from your wellheads to your compressor sites. The compressor site itself will see an increased valuation, just like we do on the western part of our county with all of our coalbed methane compressor sites. So we will see increased valuation going to the school districts, fire districts, the county and whatnot out there. Will it be to the extent that we saw on the western part of the county? Definitely not, because I don't think they're producing thousands and thousands and thousands of what we call MCS for coalbed methane, but they are in production. So as soon as Blue Star continues to grow and produce, we will be contacting them and getting with their accountants and sending them the declarations so we can get them online. But as the assessor, I would love to see a compressor station go in. Just as a point of clarification, unfortunately, our county roads are not serviced by our county mill levy, county roads, and somebody can correct me if I get off on the wrong path. We get those from state taxes and other means. Because the mill levy that was dedicated to Road and Bridge, I think, was voted to be removed back in the 70s, maybe the 80s?
After 2000.
Was that after 2000? It was even after? Okay, but I know it's been quite some time. I know in my 20s plus years, we have not had a mill levy dedicated to upgrading county roads. But yes, we will see an increase to county coppers and other entity coppers.
Well, and I appreciate that, pointing that out because that was something, the HDF, it's what actually title it, users' tax funds, what actually provides the services.
Yes, because a lot of folks think that our county roads come from the taxes that are collected to the county. That is just not how it functions, that's not the mechanical mechanism we use for our county roads. Any other questions, gentlemen, anyone?
Thank you, Mr. Amado.
You're very welcome.
Well, I'm gonna make a last call for anyone that would like to provide testimony for or against this particular application, online or here in the room. One last call. Sir?
My name's Ron Lee.
Please raise your right hand, sir.
So on the environment penalty and perjury, the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And please state your name one more time.
Ron Lee.
Thanks.
Los Angeles County's had the ranching business, coal business, coal methane business, and it's constantly having to reinvent itself for financial reasons. And with the coalbed methane wells becoming depleted west of town up here, we have hundreds of people that are experienced in this field. As they lose their jobs up here because the coalbed, coalbed methane is being depleted, this will give them an opportunity to maybe stay in the county, earn a good income, not have to go to taxes and things like that. I hope you approve this, I think it'd be great, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, appreciate your comments. Well, I am going to make another call for one last, a comment on support or against this particular project. Here and now, I right now, I'm going to hold my board to move to executive session. I would love to get a couple of questions answered from the council. And if you give us just a few minutes, we'll be back and we'll have a decision and a vote. So thank you, stand by, and you can use the facilities for those who are here. We have restrooms downstairs and on the third floor.
Recording stopped.
With attempt.
Recording in progress.
I want to thank you all for your patience, and I want to call this, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn executive session and enter into the public hearing once again. Just a moment. Second. Commissioner Serow?
Yes.
Push your hands?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez? Yes, thank you. I want to thank all of you for your patience and for your patience to go through this process. As Commissioner Lucero stated earlier, he will be recusing himself and voting in this particular project because he had some involvement at the beginning when the project began its conversation. So as the chairman of the board, I'm going to take, I'm going to step down to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion in the following manner. My motion is to approve MF 2025-001, a B&amp;L Enterprise for Pining Canyon Helium Plant and a proposed major facility located on County Road 179. This plant will be used for processing CO2. So the motion carries that with the agreement to the operator with the road service agreement as well. That's my motion. I'll approve that motion second. Commissioner Hecht?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez? Yes. So this particular project has been approved, and this public hearing is now closed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now, we are going to move on to, back, we have another presentation, the courthouse office improvement plan, Crystal Rose. Okay, very good. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're going to go to our healing update with Aaron Till and Colton Lewis. Are they online?
I am. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, good morning. How are you?
Uh, good. You guys?
Doing well, thank you.
Wonderful. Um, both of you, uh, can take a little test audio as well?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Uh, Mr. Rockeck, do I just do that as normal and share through the Zoom?
Give me just a minute here. I think you should be grabbing down.
Okay.
Hold on, Richard. Good, good. County courthouse.
It should be... Sorry, I'm not sure. Share. There it is. Okay, can you all see it now?
Not yet.
I see it there. Those aren't blinking, see it?
Oh, interesting. Yes, you are, Ken, but you guys aren't able to see it on your end?
Give me just a minute here. We really have...
Okay.
No, we're not seeing it already.
I could also PDF it and email it to you. That would be easier.
Hello. Let me see if I can find a link on that laptop to get into the meeting. There's so many.
It'll be in your inbox in just a second.
The actual meeting is attached to the laptop that we're going to be presenting in soon.
Oh, gotcha.
I will do it in a brief break. If anyone can bear with me.
Apologize.
That's not your fault.
Anybody know any funny jokes?
We have a big audience here, so I think that was... For any right here.
Is that it?
That's you. All right, everyone, can you see, can you hear it?
Yeah, uh, I, I can still only see mine, but can somebody else other than Colton or myself confirm?
What we're, what we're sure this project goes with either one or two.
All right. I appreciate you guys meeting us today. We wanted to go through a little bit of information, kind of some of the background and provide some action items to address some of the safety concerns that we identified kind of later on in the development of the HVAC project that we have since completed. Hope you guys are all enjoying the fruits of our labor, and we appreciate your patience during the development and implementation of the HVAC project. Hopefully, the building is much more comfortable, much more energy efficient, much better, you know, service to the community and to the county employees there in Los Angeles County. The project goals of this kind of additional effort, it really boils down to two kind of primary goals. Really replace the remaining, what's called rag wire circuits throughout the building. We'll get into kind of the identification of how we came across this issue on slightly up here in a second. But with really the common goal of providing a safer, more, you know, modern operating facility throughout the courthouse there intruded at. So with that, I'll hand it over to Colton to kind of describe what we're seeing in these pictures here, and then hop into some of the implementation efforts that we've undertaken and discuss what the kind of next steps are for the project.
Yeah, so the rag wire is kind of the nickname for cloth jacketed wiring. It's, it's just a really archaic form of wire insulation that used to be used, I don't know, 100 years ago? Probably when, when electrical wiring was first put in the courthouse building. It's run through steel conduit, and part of the, part of the reason it's no longer code compliant is that the circuits that use this rag wiring rely on the, the steel conduit itself to be the ground back to the panel, to provide that safe grounding. And what happens unfortunately... And what happens unfortunately is, you know, conduit, it's connected with like screws and stuff, those can kind of work loose over time, they can get bumped, it can crack, and you can lose that contiguous, uh, the continuity of that ground all the way back to the panel. Um, fortunately, I guess, for renovation projects, you don't always have to replace this, this cloth jacketed wiring, uh, when you encounter it, as long as inspectors usually just require that you prove that you still have that continuous ground, uh, ground path, which can be easily tested on a circuit. Um, and as you can see, the, on the, on the previous, uh, electrical upgrade project that was done, um, the electricians, most of the time, just connected this existing electrical wiring directly into the panel, into the new circuit, uh, boards of the panel, or if, if they had moved the panel a little bit, they, they extended the wiring a little bit with the wire net with some, some modern, modern wires to get it to, to those circuit breaker locations. Um, the, and then, our understanding is they, they, uh, tested for continuity of ground probably to pass the inspection. Um, unfortunately, in our project, I don't, do we need to tell them to advance the slide?
Oh, good, there's a good point. Phil, can you move on to slide three, please?
So this became an issue in our project, uh, the lighting and HVAC project, because, uh, most of the circuits that still contain this, the, the cloth jacketed wiring are feeding the lights throughout the building. Um, there's some circuits that also influence some outlets, some of them are lighting and outlets, it's just, it's kind of a mix, but most of them are lighting. And, uh, we encountered this problem when, when our lighting contractor was coming through, uh, connecting the lights, the, the new light fixtures and things, and the inspector required, was okay with the, with the cloth jacketed wiring, but the inspector required to, to prove that that ground connection was still good through the conduit. And, uh, in four instances, they were not able to get that continuity of ground, and so they had to, uh, run new conduit, replace those circuits. Um, so that was done under a change order in our project, in our lighting project, and, and when this was, it all kind of came up, we did a little bit further investigation to understand just how, uh, just how extensive this was remaining in the building. The documents that the county shared with Billy, um, in our development and design of the HVAC lighting project indicated that all of the cloth jacketed wiring throughout the close, the courthouse was supposed to be removed or replaced with modern wiring and modern circuitry. Um, but apparently that was, that was missed or excluded, we're not sure, the whole history there with the previous contractor, um, and so you still have fifty to sixty, um, it was even a little difficult a little bit for our electrician partner to, to determine exactly, um, because they, they're connected to new wires and stuff, and so it's, we, our best, our best estimate is you've got about fifty-six circuits that still are, consist of this, uh, this cloth jacketed wiring. Um, and we recommend that it be replaced, uh, just because it's, it, it is kind of a potential fire hazard, uh, it's, it's not as safe, obviously, as, as the infrastructure continues to age, you might lose the, the ground continuity on the, on the other conduits where it was being relied for. Um, it, it poses a fire hazard because if there is a short and you, and you, in that circuit and you've lost that continuity of ground, maybe the conduit kind of got bumped and, and, uh, it's loose, uh, then this, this cloth jacketed wiring can like catch fire, there could, there could be like an arc flash there, catch fire, a fire, and then , uh, create a fire in the courthouse. So it's not, it's not really like a urgent, uh, you know, must be done, the elec, the electrical inspector's not requiring it to be done, um, on the rest of your wiring, but it's, it's just a good, good practice, um, that when you encounter this in a, in a renovation project, that you, you replace it and get modern, safe, uh, electrical wiring in there. Um, the approach that we had to take, though, is, it gets a little tricky because developing the pricing for this, working with the electrician that's gonna, that's gonna do this work, that we hope will do this work, is as they pull these old wires out, the intention would be to reuse the existing conduit, uh, that'll save, save a lot of money and time, um, but as they pull these old wires out, we don't know what fraction of these existing conduits are, that they're gonna be successful in doing that. This, this very old wire, it's become brittle, uh, it could break off as they're trying to pull it out, it could get jammed up and stuck in a conduit, if the conduit's broken, that might, you know, prevent them from pulling it out cleanly. And, and we have no way of knowing that until we actually go and start, you know, pull wires out of the, the conduits and then go to pull new wires through them. Um, and so what the approach that, that we, we took for this pricing is to have a, it's a, it's a pretty large kind of contingency bucket of money to address that, you know, replacing running new conduit for about half of these circuits that are, that are gonna be replaced. Um, our best estimate is that maybe between twenty and forty percent of the circuits will need to be replaced with new conduit, and so we just kind of took a conservative, like, let's say we're gonna replace about half of them to establish this, this allowance or contingency budget. Um, now, the benefit here is that, you know, we're asking you to kind of commit to this, this price, assuming the worst case that we have to replace like half of these circuits with new conduit, but whatever portion of that allowance or contingency that we don't use, you don't have to pay. So, um, hopefully the, the, the final cost to getting this all corrected is, it's lower than that, that total that, that we're asking you to enter under contract for. Um, and then, of, of course, obviously, the benefit here is that replacing all this will mean that not only all your, you know, HVAC equipment and the lighting we just put in, mainly it's the lighting that's still powering this old, this old wiring, but, but also some of your computers and just other office accessories and things are, are connected to these outlets that, that still have this, uh, rag wire circuiting. So all of the infrastructure of the whole building, uh, will need to be modern code, you know, up-to-date code compliant, um, and, and safer and avoid this potential fire hazard. So if you want to move to the next page, um, Aaron, did you want to cover this or?
Sure. Yeah, um, so when we initially began developing this, um, there was some conversations with, uh, some of the county administration about kind of the approach we would take to implement this work, realizing the HVAC work, we were kind of able to do, you know, concurrent to daily operation, um, in various different portions of the building, even then, there were still portions that had to, you know, experience some shutdowns and, uh, some relocation, things like that. So our initial, um, kind of effort was to develop this project, uh, to complete it basically like a flat on the wall, uh, unintrusive to, uh, daily work operations, um, and in order to do that, we obviously would have to pay, uh, the subcontractor, uh, for their labor efforts, um, for nights and weekend, uh, exist, additional, uh, hourly costs. The benefits, though, um, there, there's a couple of benefits, uh, to this approach. One, obviously, is, is, uh, unup, uh, undisturbed, uh, work operation. Uh, the other, which, though, is because we're able to get in really and be, uh, undisturbed in our work, uh, it's a shorter estimated construction duration, about eight to twelve weeks. So while there is additional costs for the labor effort, it's a shorter amount of labor effort that's necessary, so there's some trade-offs there. Um, that initial, uh, I think pricing we got back was a little north of two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. Um, you'll see listed on here, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-four for that base project, um, with, uh, kind of a caveat on bullet two there, um, we have some additional efforts that we're developing, uh, down near you guys, um, in Pueblo, so we would be able to share some of the cost efficiencies and the travel and the overnight expenditures of our staff to manage the project, um, if we can get approval of this, uh, at that May sixth, uh, or meaning to complete the majority of this work in June and July of this year. Uh, so you'll see, uh, we actually attempted to evaluate a VE option, which would be doing that work during the daytime, um, then we would lose the, the efficiency of our staff of being able to manage multiple projects at once, and then also the additional, you know, up to, uh, six additional weeks of, of time, uh, that's necessary, so, um, there is a little bit of savings, you can see in the conduit allowance that Colton had mentioned. Um, obviously, it, it is a little bit more expensive to do it, uh, during the night and weekend hours, um, but if you look at the product as a whole, it's, it's, you know, relatively inexpensive to, to ship to that night work. So, um, it was supposed to be a VE effort, see if we could save any costs, um, and see if there was any trade-offs there, but, um, unfortunately, it, it doesn't save a whole lot, but we wanted to provide it as a potential option if costs are, are more of a concern. Um, the other cost, just to make everybody aware of, that had been incurred, uh, to get to this point, was, um, the investigation, uh, and replacement of those two, four, uh, sorry, the four circuits that we had to include during our HVAC project, which I think Colton kind of alluded to earlier, that's already been paid, um, we just wanted to document that as kind of an additional expense regarding this effort. Um, and then we, we did some initial development, kind of figure out what the proper approach would be to, uh, to, to implement this work, uh, and then we, uh, went through, uh, kind of a process with, uh, various different electrical contractors. Um, we didn't get a whole lot of interest on this work, it's, uh, pretty, um, it, it's not the, not the easiest thing to do, I guess, um, but we did identify a partner in Adams Electric, and they wanted, uh, to give us a good vote of confidence in that number of circuits that we were estimating that needed to be replaced, um, so they went out and spent, uh, their part of the weekend trying to identify what that overall, uh, effort would entail. Um, the only thing we have not included, um, I don't anticipate it being significant, if even at all, um, would be any asbestos payment. Obviously, we did a significant amount of asbestos, uh, remediation during our HVAC lighting project. I believe, uh, the only notable area that I think might need to be addressed is, I believe Mr. Norcam's office still has, uh, some of the asbestos ceiling tiles in there, uh, so we might have to address that as part of this project, but again, it should be relatively, um, you know, uh, low cost. Um, the, uh, the note.
And that would only be encountered if the particular circuit that runs in that area with asbestos, we find out has to have the conduit replaced, and so then we have to like deal with the asbestos, so that's, it's just, it's, it's hard to predict, um, how much of it, where we might camera needing to do that, so that's, that's why it's, uh, we're not confident to give you a cost estimate on that, and it's, it's not work that we, uh, just the type of general contractor that we are, um, we don't have the, the liability insurance for it essentially, so if it is encountered, it would have to be hired by a third party to update.
So along with the HVAC and lighting effort, we would manage that process, just, you know, get some, uh, some protocols from, uh, some of the, uh, contractors that complete that type of work and then bring them back to the county, but again, that's a, a pretty small chance. Uh, our pricing for our professional services for sites for vision, construction management, uh, kind of pre-con effort and some of the design development, um, we went back to the request qualifications that we submitted, um, for the HVAC project, being that this would be a kind of an amendment to that, uh, existing effort, um, and we actually polled those, um, we're, we're at, or in some cases, I believe we're actually below, uh, it's obviously a much different endeavor than an, an HVAC remodel, so, um, the, the costs that are incurred, as far as milling's costs, are at or below those percentages listed in that RFQ, so. That is the extended presentation. Um, Colton, I agree, answer any questions, um, comments, concerns. Uh, obviously, um, really, the only kind of, uh, question on our end is, is when can we hopefully begin this work, um, as, as illustrated on this slide, uh, if we're able to get approval by May sixth, that aligns very well with our schedule as well as Adams Electric's schedule, uh, to provide you with these cost estimates, uh, and, and, uh, get this work done, uh, as I mentioned, by the end of July is, is our current goal.
Well, Colton and Aaron, thank you for, uh, the presentation, uh, this is Commissioner Felix Lopez. Uh, one, one question, of course, uh, I like the option of doing it evenings and weekends, obviously, there's not gonna be any disruption to the, uh, to the activities that we have at the county level. Uh, can you, as far as the cost of two-fifty-four, five-fifty-six, uh, to do it on, uh, basically to complete the project, uh, on the weekends and evenings, how close are, are you to saying that that's pretty accurate figure? Uh, it could be more, it could be less, am I correct on that?
Uh, no, that, that is being presented today as a, a guaranteed max price contract, so we, we would not exceed that budget. Um, and as, as Colton mentioned, there would be the, the opportunity, and illustrated in the contract would be, um, the, the use of the conduit allowance would be, um, directly mediated back.
Aaron.
Yep.
Aaron, I just, I wanna, I wanna correct you there. It, it's a, it's a really conservative estimate, that we have to like replace conduit from sixty percent of the circuit, that seems, that seems very conservative. But what we don't know for sure is maybe, maybe almost all of them, like the condition of them is so bad that almost all of them have to be replaced. And, and so if we encounter a situation where we exceed this allowance, then we would need to come back and have a discussion about change orders for completing, you know, uh, running conduit for the rest of those, but I, I think that's pretty unlikely. We, we build a more reasonable expectation, maybe twenty to forty percent of those conduits will need new ser, new, uh, will need to be replaced, and, and so what we question it for is to do fifty percent of them. And that means, that would be like additional core drilling, which we might not need to do, um, we did a lot of core drilling, obviously, you're all, uh, probably familiar, during the HVAC project, we had to run a lot of high D and stuff around, so there's already a lot, uh, holes through walls we may be able to utilize if we need to run new conduit, so, um, so this, it's a, it's a pretty conservative, uh, uh, budget for this, like, allowance to do this additional work, but there is a small chance that it, that we might exceed it and come back and, and have that conversation with you. I think it's, it's pretty unlikely, though.
Yes, so to summarize my, to summarize, summarize the question, the two-fifty-four is pretty much a solid figure, the one-oh-six for the conduit allowances, the ones that are gonna be fluctuating?
That, that's a, that's my summary, yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay.
And thank you for noting that, Colton. Um, to give a slight vote of confidence that, you know, kind of to, to steer you in the direction of why we think that it'll be significantly less than even that fifty percent, is the four circuits that we did replace, um, we were able to pull, uh, through those circuits, so we, we have four data points that we were able to pull, doesn't obviously mean that all of them would be able to, but, um, we, we do have a high level of confidence that we'll be able to, uh, stay within this budget, if not under, but yes, thank you, Colton, for the clarification that there is a, uh, per contract, there would be a, a max, uh, number of circuits that would be identified for that conduit allowance. The two-fifty-four is presented as a, a GMP for the actual wiring replacements.
And Aaron, if I may, um, the four circuits that you pulled, the reason you had to pull them was because there was no longer a, a ground via the conduit, correct?
That's right, yeah, when we went through, you know, you guys have quite a few lighting circuits, obviously, um, you know, somewhere around sixty, um, we were able to prove, provide the, um, the HJ with that, uh, confidence that we had, the, the grounding on those other circuits. Obviously, as Colton mentioned earlier, you know, these are old conduits, they're, they're in the walls, but, you know, any kind of rework or, you know, but just because we had a continuity during our testing, doesn't mean you're guaranteed to have continuity for the rest of, you know, the courthouse's existence, so.
I'm sorry.
Those four in particular, we weren't able to provide that continuity and therefore had to replace that wire.
The con, the contractor, they were still going to pull that new wiring through that conduit, even though it wasn't, uh, providing the ground back to the panel, and of the, of the, uh, cloth wire and rag wire that you folks encountered on the HVAC, what percentage of what you encountered are the fours? Is it ten percent of what you encountered, or the twenty to forty percent that you encountered, or?
Well, we, we're, we're planning on replacing fifty-six, and, and we replaced four, so in, in theory, there's about sixty total circuits that didn't get addressed.
What I'm, what I'm trying to conclude, and maybe there's no way to conclude it off of the data that you got, is when you're talking about, is a wild guess, from twenty to forty percent of the conduit, uh, may need to be replaced, and therefore the hundred-six-thousand, um, from the four that you replaced, is there any way to come up with a percentage that you encountered of what that four may, um, may be a part of? Is it twenty percent? Is it forty percent? Or you just only encountered the four because you couldn't get a ground back and that's why you changed those out?
So Phil, uh, you, you, you have about sixty circuits that contain lighting hose, and when we replace the lighting, we have to confirm a probability of. And when we replaced the lighting, we had to infer continuity of ground on all of those circuits in order to pass the inspection.
Okay, good.
On four of them, on four of them, that has failed, and that's why the new wire had to be pulled through that existing conduit. Fortunately, the lighting contractor did that, was able, was able to do so without breaking off the old wire. You know, they were able to reuse that conduit successfully, and that's why Aaron's saying, like, the indication is, hopefully, the conduits are all regular lighting circuits, and we could have the condition that we can, we can do the same thing on the remaining 56 or so.
Okay.
The reason we're addressing this in this manner, rather than just presenting a proposal for 254, is in communicating the understanding that there might be additional costs, is with a relatively short construction duration of, you know, eight weeks, we'd like to avoid having to come back to the county to get an approval to add on these additional circuits. We'd like to be able to complete that work as it's identified. So that being said, we will provide, that number is not a marked up number. That is a direct from the subcontractor number, plus a little bit of cost associated with some of that core drilling that Colton mentioned. So we would provide you with the substantiation of those costs to understand what portion of that we used. And as Colton mentioned, 100% of what doesn't get used would be unbilled to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Well, to both of you, I want to thank you for the information. Now we have a lot of homework to go and research. And in the meantime, if there is any other questions, obviously, those who are going to come to either the two of you, but hopefully we'll be able to come to an agreement here at the next meeting.
Perfect. Yeah, we, hey, it's been very bad news, but we also appreciate the opportunity to be able to address this for you, being a pretty, you know, critical safety component of the facility. So we appreciate the opportunity very little.
Thank you so much, and definitely we understand the concern. So thank you both. We're going to go again, and you have a great day. We're going to move to the next item on that agenda, and that's going to be the courthouse office in Brooklyn Park. And let me follow Mr. Crystal Rhodes. What a presentation today. And Mr. Kenny Bowman. You brought your own bodyguard.
Yep.
Sorry, no, you don't have to. I mean, unless you want.
No. So I guess you guys have this correct?
We do.
Okay. That is the list of the departments from worst to least worst. And then the little graph attached is our plans that we have modified to try and get the painting and the cracks done as soon as possible. He's planning on doing the floors for 2025, and then as we approach the end of the year, he's going to start working on patching, sanding, and getting rid of those cracks and walls. And then the flooring, we're going to try and start in 2028, because I think that's going to be a little bit more involved.
Expense wise, I think my question is going to be back to our finance director. As we go through the next two, three fiscal years, the plan is to replace flooring, correct?
Correct. We'd like to consider next year, we'd like to do probably, I don't know, you guys on patching. So I think this patching has to happen before paint. So we can like do the second floor, maybe one here, and then next year we like the first floor.
First floor flooring.
Yeah.
So Mr. Bowman, are you happy of going with any outside contractors to help with the patching? Because that would be down in house.
We'll get it in house.
Okay. And I know some of these, once we did the building stabilization, some of the cracks in some of the buildings are minute compared to what they used to be nonetheless. What do you think as far as, you know, timeline? And then, I guess my question to you is, work with the officers. I know we have one county representative that just gave a notice as to when you're going to be there so they can back around for any disruptions, anything that you might need. But I think, you know, for where the county is, I, I read that plan, and I think it's pretty acceptable.
Are we, as elected officials, going to get sent the plan? We don't know whose, we don't know what the plan is.
Yeah, once, once we talk, as far as, you know, what do we do, like the patching and the painting, it's going to be phase one. Then whether it's first floor, second floor, or third floor of this individual building, then absolutely, we're going, we're going to share that with everyone.
Thank you.
Yes.
And to clarify, the flooring is based on what is worst to least?
Sure.
We were just trying to get the second floor walls to look nice for all of the public. And then the flooring is just based on what is flawed apart versus not.
If I may interject, I think you're wanting to have a work session sometime in May, am I correct?
Macy's.
For me?
Macy's.
There you go.
And I guess that would pertain to, because we're trying to have the walls be, you know, almost the same. You don't want rainbow colors, if I'm understanding correctly. But I guess that's what the work session would.
Yes. In other words, do they want to get input from all the elected officials, et cetera, to try and give us a good, give them some good guns? Because I really don't know that it's, I can't see that one orange and one pink, one purple, and all these different colors. It would only be similar colors of flooring, et cetera. So work session's going to happen. I'll get that input.
Macy's.
And on the other hand, I know Mr. Bowman and I were sharing a couple of ideas. The floors throughout the building, all the marble floors, we might have to buy any external contractor now that the majority of the, now, we don't know exactly what, what's going to happen with the conduit, so we might have to plan around that as well. But, you know, just to give them a one good, whatever that is, wax, whatever they use on the marble floors to make sure that they are, you know, back to, as you mentioned, Ken, it used to happen quite often, but nonetheless, we need to pay attention to that detail throughout the entire use of our programs.
And just one more thought. I believe that come, the opportunity to apply for another underfunded grant this coming September, I believe the thought is to try and take care of the cracks, maybe flooring on third floor. Do you have underfunded steel viable and has any funds?
Really good point. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. So now that brings us to the next night item, public comment. Gee, usually we get here by nine o'clock, public comment. Did we have anybody sign that?
No, I'm sorry, no. Check.
And so at this time, anybody online that wishes to address the board of county commissioners, all you would need to do is raise your hand or lift yourselves. Hearing that, I'm going to move now to section nine. New business consideration of an appointment to Los Angeles County Lighting Commission, Mr. Doran Camp.
Before you commissioners, there's a county commissioner they consider trying to go please, out here, in the street, this is Mr. Sarah, I normally, we've had you in here, so I can correct that.
No, we've not. John Morley, who had been on the lighting commission for many, many years, was due the end of March of late, and he chose not to agree on it. So it has been advertised.
Anybody here in the audience interested in writing for the landing commission? I'm just going to go about this. So anyhow, let's keep advertising on that. So I think at this point in time, Mr. Doran Camp, there is no action that needs to be taken on this particular item. That's right. Nine B, consideration of O B C C number seven zero three zero to Mark Welch for $1,702.30. I think there is quite a lengthy explanation, there's a letter in there of what happened. And I don't know if we have the treasurer.
They had texted me earlier, way earlier, they had just texted them about what happened.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the treasurers? You know, there's a letter attached to as to what happened with this particular refund, if you will. Pretty much a standard process that we take every time. If I don't have any questions, I will entertain a motion. I move to approve the O B C C number seven zero three zero to Mark J Welch. Second motion.
Commissioner Has?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you, sir. Nine C, consideration of N one nine nine eight oh one one, N one pit annual report map and face of middle, Mr. Doran Camp.
Commissioner, consideration is our N 1998 zero eleven, now a bid annual report map feeds, something that is brought for the board, part of the whole standard, the year standard, so we'll take a public look at it. Sir? Commissioner, any questions? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve O B C C number seven.
A second?
Commissioner Sarah?
Wait a minute. N one nine nine eight zero one one, N one pit annual report, face of middle.
Oh, Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Has?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Consideration of procurement policy with amendments. Back to you, Mr. Doran Camp.
Commissioner, before you, the consideration is procurement policy with additional amendments. Ask the board to approve this.
Thank you, sir. And for our welcome to our treasurer, we didn't have any questions on the, but I think, I believe there's another one, so hang on for a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions on this procurement policy with amendments? I had a conversation yesterday with Mr. Doran Camp, and a couple of the questions I had, I paid for verification now, so if there are any questions, I will entertain a motion. I move to approve the procurement policy and amendments.
Second motion.
Commissioner Has?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Nine D, consideration of O B C C number seven zero three one to Todd Ray for $1,252.90. And since we have treasurer representatives, commissioners, if there are any questions, we have, we have representatives at the back of the room. Once again, there is an explicit letter attached to this explaining why the refund is being requested.
They came all the way here.
Come on, ask a question. He's got to go up.
What? I have to go up?
Yeah.
Did you?
Todd Ray's one.
Maybe, maybe you can summarize why we're producing, processing this refund.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Yeah. Good afternoon.
I'm ready.
Yeah.
So this refund for Todd Ray was an investor who, he picked up one of the tax sales accounts at the last tax sale. The individual owner, she originally paid the tax, but on her check, that's why we like to have your stuff set with them, she didn't include that. She included account number, which we go by, but she also put the address of another property. But we typically went off of the account number, so we applied her money to the account that had the account number, not the account that had the property address. So she did pay on time, but we applied the money to the wrong account, so it really should have gone to tax sale. It was an error in our part by applying the money to the wrong account.
And the tax sale must be correct.
And the tax sale, it's all went to tax sale, yes. So when she got her tax bill now, she was like, why is my bill so much higher? I did pay when she did, and we had received the payment in time, but it did get applied to the wrong account.
See.
Per the account number that she did put, but like I said, on the check, one address was one, then the memo had another address, and then an account number, so.
And the address, Sarah, was not under her name. That was on the check.
Right.
So it was a prepayment on your rights.
Yeah, so on our side, we did prepayment on the other account, yes. So that's what generated the refund to the investor.
Commissioners? No questions?
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
With the approval of O B C C number seven zero one, to Todd Ray for $1,252.90.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Has?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Nine E, consideration of Phoenix Strategies contract, Mr. Doran Camp.
Commissioner, before you consideration is, contract approval of Phoenix Strategies, the firm is going to work with some of our staff.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any speculation on how many hours?
No, commissioners, I guess kind of depends on what the, let's see, filing, I don't have any description.
Hearing that, I will entertain a motion. I will move to approve the Phoenix Strategies contract.
Second motion.
Commissioner Has?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Nine G, consideration of F A A, Aristox Airport supplemental agreement, Mr. Doran Camp.
Commissioner, before you consideration is the F A A supplemental agreements. It's basically just an agreement with the F A A to continue business as we have in I D Ps, et cetera.
Yeah, when I looked at this contract, it's pretty much, there's little information, but thank you for the verification. Any questions for Mr. Doran Camp? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
With the approval of F A A, Aristox Airport supplemental agreement.
Second? Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Has?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. Consideration of Aristox Airport consultant Bolton, make an agreement. Back to you, sir.
Commissioner, before you consideration is the Aristox consultant Bolton, make a master agreement, the agreement, and we've been working back and forth, me and myself and counsel Nelson with Bolton, make, I think we've got all of the language in and out of this agreement as we wanted, so I ask the board to approve it.
Can I look at counsel?
I reviewed it, no consensus with this, Commissioner.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Commissioners, any additional discussion?
Is this, how long is the agreement? I think it's five years. Question? Apologize, I did, I'm in front of them.
I see it now, it's five years.
Any additional discussion? I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Aristox Airport consultation, Bolton, make an agreement. Second motion.
Commissioner Has?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. Nine I, consideration of 2025 dash zero four dash zero four, T A D Airport maintenance record negotiations. Back to you, Mr. Doran Camp.
Commissioner, before you consideration is, the T A D Airport maintenance record negotiations, it's what our consultants, Bolton and Make, are going to be charging the project for seal coating of taxiways. So in addition to the master agreement, every time we do any kind of maintenance out of the airport, as long as Bolton and Make are consultants, they will be, as has happened historically, they will be submitting this additional fee schedule. they will be submitting this additional fee schedule. This one, we do not have to have a third party verification on it because it's seven hundred thousand dollars. Every time the fee of a consultant goes over a hundred thousand dollar threshold or is equal to, then a third party has to give the those fees to make sure, I don't know, get all the names correct, that they are reasonable. And I can remember the terminology the FAA requires, and since it's seven hundred thousand, we don't have to pay for that third party to take a look at it.
What covers this cost? What covers the cost?
Help me your financial group, I think you told me two point five percent county yesterday. You didn't know that.
FAA is planning like ninety seven percent, and then the state of Colorado, and then the county, the local share. And I thought when we spoke, I thought they said the county is two point five, this year it's probably five percent. But I could have missed word, but I thought that's what they were, they spoke about, to our shares actually less.
Four thousand dollars.
Well, they protect us.
Thank you.
Great point.
Any additional questions on this agreement? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion.
With the approval of two thousand twenty five O four O four TAD airfield airfield maintenance record of negotiations.
A second.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. We got this coming item, nine J consideration of resolution twenty five dash zero two zero of closing seven bill twenty five zero zero three. At this point in time, commissioners, the governor signed his bill into law last Friday, and I'm uncertain what is the perspective of the board. And we do have our San Francisco sheriff in the audience. I don't know if I shared, if you'd like to make any comments, what he perspective, and or we can table this. I'm going to leave that to the commissioner.
I would like to table for information from the attorney. In two thousand nineteen, we passed a red light resolution and for a preservation sanctuary county. And I'm not sure if the language in that resolution wouldn't suffice, but I, I think we need direction from our attorney to
And part of the, thank you, Commissioner Hess, part of the question that we had is that our, the local county sheriff is going to incur a lot of, or the bulk of the expense in doing the approval in black man checks. So we need to research a bit more on that. So was that, was that a, a motion? Thank you, sir. A second.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, sir. Nine K consideration of congressional directed spending letter to Representative Jeff Bird, send to John Hickenlooper, and send to Michael Bennett for Aristoc's Airport taxiway, Mr. Dorian.
Before you, before you, permission is the letter commissioned to reference for congressional directed spending request for Aristoc's airport. And we're seeking two million dollars. Every year we'll submit letters to our elected officials. We have not been successful yet, but we will continue as long as the board approves submitting the letter and continue to submit.
Thank you, sir. And this is, we keep coming to the well, and sometimes we come out with a little bit of, but we'll see what happens. Commissioners, any questions on these projects that have been submitted? Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve a congressional direct spending letter to Representative Jeff Bird of Aristoc's airport. Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Nine L consideration of work from a county sculptor on an appointment of Kathy Raisner. We have a resolution.
Go ahead, sir. We have a resolution that was approved by the Board of Porfong County Board of County Commissioners. Apparently, I've not gone over to the bylaws, and apparently our bylaws, there are a lot of, are both boards to approve the appointment, and this is one of Porfong County's appointments. And frankly, I'm not sure why that's required because I'm off in, well, a tangent here, if this board says no, that board says yes, is that present?
Whatever, no, it's San Francisco. Board of County. Could be. Well.
So I ask the board to approve it since this Porfong County's project may be approved.
It's approved.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes. Do you hear the resolution? Understand?
It's not ours, I'm going to question.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We're going to section ten, financial management consideration of payroll and bills for the first half of late April two thousand twenty five. Good afternoon, Madam Finance Director, Corvetti.
We have, let's see, payroll has April fifteenth, two thousand twenty five, two hundred thirty two thousand, two forty one, and twenty seven cents. Do you have any questions on payroll? I'm going to stay on April second, in the amount of eight hundred twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars and thirty seven cents. Do you have any questions on anything that I didn't tell?
Do you think I have?
I do have a lot. Is it confusing?
I guess that's the question, was the highlights.
It was such a short period waiting for payroll. I think that's why, I was just trying to get it out. I must have heard about this. And, but do you have any questions on anything you've looked at, about that?
I don't have any questions. Hearing that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the payroll and bills for the fourth half of late April two thousand twenty five. Second.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Sarah?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, thank you. And the next one, this information, all the financials as of March two thousand twenty five, and once again, Finance Director Corvetti, thank you for providing this, this document.
As you can see, so you figured from January to March, I've booked a lot of revenue back to two thousand twenty four. So you can see general fund has a loss right now, one point two million, because the sales taxes are part of whatever receipt that you have been booked back. And then there's other revenues as well. So we'll just continue to keep watching as the year goes. We do have some revenues that we did receive. So I was, I was kind of stick my nose in the ground twice, but so with the company that was today, I did ask them about new sales, because we just got five hundred thousand from a solo payment for new sales tax. Sometimes, it's real important that we do ask them every time. So I asked Sean, gave them our resolution for the new sales tax, or any kind of material that they actually will have to pay for their county. So just to tell you that, so we did just receive that for new sales tax. So I just want to tell you that.
That's great.
Sometimes if I'm looking at it, it's because I'm saying, you know, I want to tell them about the new sales tax because that is running to our county, because we did, that wasn't in our ballot question. So just to tell you that, so that, 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 that just came in April, so it's not on this, this report right now. Okay? Rodham Bridge has a deficit of two hundred ninety three thousand. Airport has a debt of fifty four thousand.